Let me call the Reno City Council meeting of October 26 to order. Mr. Don Jensen, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Guston.
Here.
Zadra.
Here.
Sfranza, absent. Dorch.
Here.
Ayazi, absent. Hascheff.
Here.
Kachel, absent.
Do you have a public comment for us? Thank you. Mr. Lonny Feimster.
Thank you, members of the council. I decided to comment at the front of the meeting rather than the end. The last time it took five hours and I have some commitments later. I did come to speak on the issue that I had spoken at last month about redistricting. I was concerned, I had to take a trip to Virginia and several states back east to look at some things that have been done on redistricting. And I did leave a copy of my comments for the city council members that might not be here. Basically, what the NAACP has proposed to the Washoe County School District, School Board, Sparks and Reno City Council is to consider a more compact and contiguous redistricting proposal that would respect the shared interest of the urban core of Reno's urban communities of interest. This strategy for redistricting will allow the council members to be more responsive to their constituents. A community of interest is a group of people concentrated in a geographical area who share similar interests, priorities, whether social, cultural, ethnic, economic, political or religious. We recommend, and I say we recommend, the NAACP branch has voted in two meetings where we spent over an hour discussing this, and I've spent the last couple of years studying it, that they will support my comments and issues on this concept of urban core redistricting that takes in account the many important issues that the urban population share and create a community of interest that is geographically compact and contiguous. We do feel that the current boundaries for the Reno City Council members are not contiguous nor compact, which are important components of the Voting Rights Act. The urban core of the Reno needs to have the opportunity to elect representatives of their choice, rather than to try and make population adjustments to old boundaries that have many inherent flaws. The redistricting takes, this redistricting concept takes into account the major change to demographics in our urban core. We recommend three Reno County City Council seats that represent three-fifths of the population that comprise a majority community of interest in the urban core of Reno. Currently, the most egregious offense is to ward three and four boundaries down Montello Street, which clearly violates the concept of the Voting Rights Act and splits up a community of interest. After discussing this boundary issue with hundreds of northeast Reno residents over the past year, not a single person thought that this was right to split the community in this way. In my opinion, after studying this for the last 10 years and intensely for the last two years, including working for the Census Bureau to make sure I had a good grasp of the census maps, how they worked, and I could do the type of research, I feel that two-fifths of the population control five-fifths of the Reno City Council. When you look at the overlay of money for Washoe County, it is clear the urban core has the least money and the least political influence. By cutting up the city, as they call the pizza pie approach, you cut the urban core into so many parts because the voter registration is so different in the urban core, the urban core really doesn't have the opportunity. And you have to look at the economic overlay as well as the voting registration and voting patterns in the urban core to really get a grasp of how serious this is. Sparks, Washoe County, Washoe County School District have met with the NAACP. We've gone over maps and we've met with their map drawers. I get a totally different feel from the Reno City Council. They don't seem to want to have the inclusiveness of the public in this process. This is a critical phase of governance in our community and I hope you reconsider and invite more people into the process of redistricting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Lonny, one of the proposals, and I'm not involved in the subcommittee, addresses the boundary issue on Montello Street.
Yes.
And that would be resolved under option B, and we will be discussing that later on in the agenda, potentially for direction on L6 on today's agenda. But also, the subcommittee's been having public meetings to take input on the redistricting. So those have been noticed. I'm not sure if you've been able to attend those, but...
I did get a notice on last Wednesday, there was the Latino Immigration Meeting that were very involved in this, had their meetings the same time. I had to go to Virginia and North Carolina, but part of it was to look at this urban suburban concept and what problems it's been creating. So I was back east and I didn't get a chance. I have not heard of any other meetings. And I did want to say to Councilman Ayazi, I did not get the map. I think possibly you left my middle name out on the email, but that's not critical. I can get the map.
Here's the nuance right here.
Yeah. But I did put this in writing because I wanted to make sure you understood just exactly what I was talking about when we talked urban core. This is the issue largely about the affluent suburbs having undue political control over the entire city, and the county is the same problem.
So Lonny, if you want to be here for L6, which is later on today's agenda, we can discuss that at that time. Because right now, it's just public comment. I just wanted you to be aware that it's on here. And one of the options would take care of that, the issue you addressed in your letter.
Okay, that particular issue, that's only one issue.
I understand. We may not agree on the others, but you'll have your opportunity to...
The point I was saying is, Washoe County Sparks and Washoe County School District have met with us with the map makers. You can't just do this in three minutes. It's impossible to talk about redistricting in three minutes of public comment unless you have 15 people in a row. So I'm saying there should be some effort to meet with the Immigration Coalition people, the NAACP members that have been involved, so you can discuss what we're talking about at length and not try and hold the whole entire audience in the city council up for this specific issue. But I'll attempt to be here at L6. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Joseph Brown, please.
My name is Joseph Brown. I represent the Reno Homeless Advocacy Commission. We are really concerned at this point about not having an overflow shelter that is open for this winter. We do understand completely the city's position with the lack of funds that is available. And we have arranged to get the funding to open the shelter. We are coming through with plans on staffing and trying to talk with the police and the Sheriff's Department about security and things like that. And what our question to you is that if we can raise the money and show you that we can properly staff this, will the city council, will the city commit to helping us get the permits for some of the properties that we have in mind that we have already gotten some pretty good leads on that we can open one up? But we need the city to commit to helping us get the permit so we can get it opened up.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We did approve the overflow at the flood control meeting last month. I didn't realize that...
But there is a problem with the overflow that we've been discussing at the CAC meeting we've had, because we've had 50 or 60 people that came to the overflow shelter that we didn't see all year long. So they're coming from other cities and other places. We don't have the money to run the, and there are several groups trying to raise the money. Where they wanted to, one of them wanted to throw a tent next to the baseball stadium and that, right behind the rehab center. We've said no to that. We are looking and we will work with them and see if they raise the money and they can pay for the security and they can pay for transportation and all those things, then we want to work with them. But right now, nobody's come forward with any of the stuff to try to help us.
If I...
He's got his three minutes, you know.
I'll take care of him, Mr. Deney.
I'm comfortable with that.
Thank you, sir.
Once again, we're well aware of the financial issues here in the city and we are pretty sure that we can come up with all the money to run this shelter at no cost to the city. We just are looking for a commitment that if we do find a building, and we do want to get this so that it's not out in the public, you know, so that it's a little bit out of the way, but transportation issue becomes a, or transportation costs become an issue. We'd like to get it within walking distance of CAC. We do have three buildings we're looking at, and we're just looking for a commitment that if we find this building, we can show you that we can do it, will you help us get the permits?
What you need to do is come to the CAC meeting that we're having, and I don't know the date of it, but somebody's staff can tell you when we're having it and we'll be glad to look at it and talk with you about it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. The tag team of Darlie Jepson and Pam Bedard.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor and Councilman, thank you very much for allowing us time to speak. First of all, my name is Darlie Jepson. I'm chairman for the Reno Urban Forestry Commission, and this is Pam Bedard, who is also on the commission. First, I would like to thank Dan Guston for being our liaison on the Urban Forestry Commission. He does a great job. So thank you very much. This past Saturday, October 22, which was Make a Difference Day, keep Trucking Meadows beautiful in conjunction with the Reno Urban Forestry Commission and with the trees donated from the AT&amp;T Phone Book Recycling Program. We had volunteers from Damani Ranch High School Cheerleading Squad, AT&amp;T Pioneer Volunteers, and the International Studies Program with the University of Nevada Reno, and our volunteers with the Urban Forestry Commission. We planted 25 trees at the Comstock Park in Reno. So I just wanted to let you know that we've been very active in beautifying our area.
And my job today is to report our volunteer hours from July of 2010 to July of 2011. Cumulatively, the Urban Forestry Commission and all of its volunteers put in 323 hours towards service to the city of Reno. And 157, so half of those hours were actually doing the events that we did last year, Nevada Shade Tree Week, which this last weekend when we did our tree planting, that was part of our celebration for Nevada Day, is we have our tree planting for Nevada Shade Tree Week, which is this week. And so some of those volunteer hours were there. Some of them were in conjunction with the Nevada Landscape Association and the conference they put on every year. Some of those were the tree planting we did for Arbor Day last April. Some of them are for the tree walks we do for Art Town every year in July. And then some of those hours were for the Spring Home Show that we did this last year. We are opting not to do the Fall Home Show this year. I don't know how the home shows are going to go this next calendar year. And then we did a Girl Scouts presentation, well, Darlie did a Girl Scouts presentation earlier this spring for the local Girl Scout community. So that's what the Urban Forestry Commission has been doing, and I'm sure you guys are going to see us a lot more because we're going to do some tree stuff. Thank you.
And just for the council's edification, to be designated a Tree City USA, you need an Urban Forestry Council. We've had, and Reno has now been designated a Tree City USA 27...
28.
28 years in a row, more than any other city in the state of Nevada. It's due to people, volunteers like these two ladies and the other members of the commission. They do an outstanding job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sam Deney.
Sam Deney, the Encyclopedia of Reno Government, the most trusted name in Nevada government. Sam Deney is an Air Force Academy graduate. He has spent many years flying fighters and bombers, defending our nation against enemies inside of the borders and outside of the borders. Sam has been at virtually every city council meeting since 1994. And by the way, I'm Sam. I like to speak in the third person because when I speak in first person, I get kind of upset about how great I make myself sound and that sort of self-aggrandizing. Of course, as I say, self-aggrandizement is the ultimate form of flattery. Anyway, Sam has been at all these meetings, and if I seem a little preoccupied, oh, shouldn't use that word, should I? If I seem a little disconcerted, it's because once again, Sam was not invited to the governor's grand ballroom gown pooh baw along with all of his Scientology cult zealot friends and the Northern Nevada Network pooh baws. Once again, Sam was not invited. I know the mayor was invited. Sam wanted to go there and at least have his three minutes for his speech, but he was ignored again, the five-ton elephant that's in all the rooms, and even the governor's scared to death of him.
It only costs $40 and you can go.
$40?
Yeah, everybody's invited. Everybody in the room's invited.
You're cutting in my three minutes, Mr. Mayor.
I'll give you another two seconds.
Oh, you're going to give me extra time? Okay. You heard that he's giving me extra time. He gave that man over there extra time. I don't want any extra time. I'm happy with my three minutes. There's a big deal going on about occupation, a bunch of occupiers all over the community. You know, we got the burners, now we got the occupiers. What they had to do is try to figure out how to occupy Sam's brain. Then they'd really be going somewhere, if somebody could occupy Sam's brain. Guess what? Sam doesn't even know how to occupy his own brain. I think Mr. Ayazi was about to say that. At any rate...
You said it's a desolate space up there, Sam.
It was a desolate space, right.
No traffic up there. No one could see him protesting.
Here I am, here I am, the front man, and there's my backup over here for when I run out of funny things to say. We got Ayazi over there. By the way, you guys have a lot of, those folks, I hate to say you guys, those folks have a lot of things to say and a lot of things not to say. But the two things, they're missing two things. They're leaving out the two most important things. They have to start at square one, as I've been recommending for many years. Go over and occupy the vote-stealing computers. Get rid of those computers so we can have an honest vote, so you folks will even know that the people that you're occupying, protesting against, were honestly elected. In most cases, they were not honestly elected, and I have proven over and over again that the vote stealing is running rampant in our community, and I know it for a fact. I can prove it. You can look on my websites, look on YouTube. Secondly, you've got to not trust the media.
Let me have the stick in case I need it. All right. Approval of the agenda, item L4 has been pulled. Will be coming back to us in about 60 days. Item E1C4, GOMEX, has been pulled. Proclamations today are items C1, C2, 3, and 4. Staff would like to move item L8 right after the consent agenda, so we will be doing that. Presentations, there's none. Public comment is at 12:00 noon. Public hearings be heard after 12:15. Public hearing this evening, there is none. There will be a joint Redevelopment Agency Board meeting during this council meeting. Any other changes to the agenda? Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Let's go to approval of the minutes for October the 12.
Second?
Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Cash disbursement, October 17, excuse me, 7 through October 15. Any discussions?
No disclosures. No disclosures for me today, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dorch, Mr. Guston.
No disclosures.
Anybody? Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Edred, you're going to do the procs?
Mr. Mayor, we have with us today, Kalia Clark, who is an eight-year-old cancers. You're nine now. Oh, excuse me. You know what, honey? I love the fact that you want to be a year older. When you get our age, we just try and do everything we can to find you healthy. So that's really impressive. It's very nice to be able to celebrate your nine years and about 99 more. Whereas, cancer continues to be the second-leading cause of death in the United States, and whereas the American Cancer Society estimates that over 12,000 Nevadas, Nevadans will be diagnosed with cancer in 2011. And whereas, over time, cancer will affect the lives of nearly every Nevadan, either as a patient, relative, friend, or a loved one. And the Cancer, the American Cancer Society, established in 1913, is a nationwide, community-based, voluntary health organization dedicated to eliminating cancer as a major health problem by preventing cancer, saving lives, and diminishing suffering from cancer through research, education, advocacy, and service. And whereas, the American Cancer Society funds its mission through community-based, volunteer-run fundraisers, and the American Cancer Society relies on and appreciates volunteer efforts such as the efforts of Karen Jensen and Jensen Precast. And whereas, the American Cancer Society is dedicated to helping the community through funding cancer research, education, advocacy, and patient services, and through community-based fundraising events like Relay for Life, the Suits and Sneakers Gala, Coaches vs. Cancer Golf Tournament, and Big Dig, the American Cancer Society is able to reach out to more cancer patients, survivors, and their families. Now therefore, the mayor of Reno, Robert A. Kachel, does hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 26, as a day to honor the American Cancer Society and also Kalia. In and for the city of Reno, we do encourage all citizens to give appreciation to the American Cancer Society of Nevada and Jensen Precast for their dedication to the health of our community. This is for you. Do you feel comfortable with that?
When I was first with my mom, and I was still a baby, she found out that I was very sick, and she said she had cried every single day of the year. And when I was three, it started growing again, and I lost my eye. And I felt different from the other kids, feeling that I didn't belong. But my mom said I did belong and that I was special to be alive, and I feel happy that I'm still alive and I'm healthy again.
Karen, you've just got to feel like your efforts are beyond belief. Thank you. Thank you. We're happy to celebrate with you.
Sharon, we should honor Mr. Jensen also for everything you've done in helping Sir. Do you wish to say something? I love putting him on the spot. Put him up there. Come on up and say something. You know, and you helped.
Thank you, Your Honor. I really need to acknowledge Karen. She's led the team, Team Deanna. She's worked tirelessly and very dedicated. The other people in the audience hear from Jensen. I'll stand up if you would. They're here with the team. Anyway, they've all been tireless workers on the thing, and I appreciate them very much. Karen?
I'm not asking.
Kayla?
Thank you.
Excuse me, yes. Thank y'all. Thank you very much, Kayla. Would you come by here so we can shake your hand?
And then just go right up there. Oh, she got a city of Reno pin. Is that right, Mr. Ayazi?
Yes, that's right.
Very nice.
Kayla, you are a very special young lady, and you keep on, okay? Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, she's been able to get well because of the efforts like Karen and Jensen Precast and so many others in our community, like you. This is another proclamation also relating to Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas, in 2011, an estimated 43,030 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and 37,660 will die from the disease. And whereas, pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers and the fourth-leading cause of cancer death in the United States. And when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is usually too late for an optimistic prognosis. And 75% of the pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while 94% of the pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. And whereas, of all of the racial, ethnic groups in the United States, African-Americans have the highest incident rate of pancreatic cancer, between 34% and 70% higher than any other groups. And whereas, there are no cure for pancreatic cancer, and there have been no significant improvements in survival rates in the last 40 years. And the federal government invests significantly less money in pancreatic cancer research than it does for any of the other leading cancer killers. And pancreatic cancer research continues, constitutes only 2% of the National Cancer Institute's federal research funding, a figure far too low given the severity of the disease, its mortality rate, and how little is known about how to arrest it. And whereas, the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the first and only national patient advocacy organization that serves the pancreatic cancer community in the city of Reno and nationwide by focusing its efforts on public policy, research funding, patient services, and public awareness education related to developing effective treatments and a cure for pancreatic cancer. And whereas, the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and its affiliates in the city of Reno support those patients currently battling pancreatic cancer, as well as those who have lost their lives to the disease, and are committed to nothing less than a cure. The good health and well-being of the residents of the city of Reno are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments. Now therefore, the mayor of the city of Reno, Robert A. Koschel, does hereby proclaim November two thousand eleven as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month.
Hi. On behalf of the forty, over forty-four thousand Americans who will be hearing that diagnosis of, yes, you have pancreatic cancer, I want to thank you for your willingness to step forward and proclaim November as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. When they do hear that diagnosis, their life expectancy will only be five to seven months with the way research and funding is right now. My husband is an almost-three-year survivor, and he would like to say a few words, if that would be okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the proclamation. And it's sort of hard to follow Carla, but I'm gonna try. Yeah, I was diagnosed in December of oh-eight. I've gone through two major surgeries and six months of chemo, and I'm here. Fact is, seventy-five percent of us die in the first six months, as Ginny said. There's a six percent survival rate after five years. I know statistically what I'm looking at. Recently, we've, we've seen the loss of Steve Jobs, Ralph Stamen, Nobel Prize winner, Roger Williams. Other ones that have passed away is Michael Landon, Patrick Swayze, Jean Upshaw. This disease knows no economic, social, racial, gender issue. It's out there. It's very hard to detect. So, your proclamation making November Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month is important. But what's more important is if I could ask you just to do one more thing. Right now, before Congress is two bills, H.R. seven-three-three and Senate Bill three, three-sixty-two. They're both the Pancreatic Cancer Action Research and Education Act. Clause for developing a strategic plan, clause for no money, is just directing the NIH and the National Cancer Institute to develop a plan. So far, Senator Heller has endorsed it and is a co-sponsor. Senator Reed has indicated his support. Shelley Berkeley down in Las Vegas has supported it. I now need you to call Mr. Mark Armady, who is our congressman up here, and see if we can get his support. It is important that this bill, not for me, I have the disease. I think I said to you last year when I was here, I'm the walking dead. I know what the numbers are. But it's gonna be for people like Carla. It's gonna be for our kids and our grandchildren. We need research for them. It takes twenty years to do the research. If we don't start it right now, it's gonna be them that suffer. So on behalf of your children, grandchildren, and everyone else's children and grandchildren, please help us get this bill passed. Thank you for the proclamation, but one more phone call would be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dorch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Jim. Whereas, James Jim Newburg, a Reno native, has long been an advocate of citizen involvement and volunteerism, dedicating his time and expertise to benefit local government and our community. And whereas, Jim, representing the city of Reno, was a member of the Regional Planning Commission from August two thousand three to August two thousand seven, and again from January two thousand eight to June two thousand ten, serving as vice chair from July two thousand five to two thousand six, and July two thousand eight to June two thousand nine, and as chair from July two thousand six to June two thousand seven, and from July two thousand nine to June two thousand ten. And whereas, Jim began his tenure on the City of Reno Planning Commission in June two thousand three and served two full terms through July two thousand eleven, devoting over eight years to public issues in the Truckee Meadows, and working professionally and fairly with staff, developers, and residents to ensure our quality of life. And whereas, Jim was instrumental in many important deliberations and decisions, including master plan amendments, regional plans, policy adoption, annexation, implementation of the Transit Oriented Develop Court, Development Corridor Plan, Regional Utilities Corridor Plan, and other projects of regional significance. And whereas, Jim served faithfully on both the Ward Two and Ward Three Neighborhood Advisory Boards with terms as vice chair and chairperson, and was involved in a number of NAB-sponsored improvement projects and annual neighborhood events. And whereas, Jim served as a critical resource to residents interested in information related to regional planning issues, and gave unselfishly of his time and expertise. And whereas, the city of Reno acknowledges and appreciates Jim Newburg's faithful and enthusiastic service to the city of Reno and its residents. Therefore, I, on behalf of Reno Mayor Bob Koschel, do hereby officially proclaim Wednesday, October twenty-sixth, two thousand eleven, as Jim Newburg Day.
Thank you, council members. Without you, I wouldn't have been able to do this. I'd like to say thanks to my wife and all the people that's supported me. I would encourage anybody to get involved with their neighborhood, their city, and their council people. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim, for everything.
Whereas, family and domestic violence continues to be a prevalent, as prevalent, to be prevalent as a social problem, and whereas, the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people, but cross all economic, racial, affectional preference, and societal barriers, and are supported by societal indifferences. And whereas, the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy and dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical emotion, physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse. And whereas, the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting society as a whole. And whereas, it is battered victims and survivors themselves who have been in the forefront of efforts to bring peace and equality to the home. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Reno Mayor Bob Koschel of the city of Reno, do hereby proclaim October two thousand eleven as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
I am John Cadlec, the Reno City Attorney, and I want to thank the mayor and city council for this proclamation recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month. At this time, I'd like to recognize several individuals who work with the victims of domestic violence to see that they receive justice. I don't know if my criminal chief, Daniel Wong, is still here. He was. I think he has. One of my... Yes, there he is. And I also have my support personnel, our victim-witness advocate, Suzanne Ramos, if she'll stand, and Penny Coulter, who is our administrative analyst support person. And they are the leaders of the team that is responsible for prosecuting domestic violence cases. And I'd also like to recognize Chief Steve Pitts and the Reno Police Department, who provide assistance to the victims of domestic violence. You know, it is unfortunate that some in society still see violence as a mean, means of resolving issues. Every day, spouses, significant others, those in dating relationships, parents and children are subjected unnecessarily to abuse. We must continue to advocate that violence does not resolve issues, that is, that it is never a means to an end. Let us hope that someday, we will not have to have a Domestic Violence Awareness Month. But until that day comes, I want the victims of domestic violence to know that the Reno City Attorney's Office will continue to vigorously prosecute acts of domestic violence. And I know that the Reno Police Department, under the leadership of Chief Pitts, will continue to vigorously investigate and bring forward for prosecution acts of domestic violence. Victims of domestic violence deserve justice, and we will see that they receive it. Thank you.
This time, we'll go on our agenda, the consent agenda, item one. Anybody have anything you want to pull for discussion? Mr. Azzi?
E-five, Mr. Mayor.
E-five. Any others?
E-four, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Guston, E-four. Any others? Ms. Frazel?
Yeah, C-one, Mr. Mayor.
E-one?
No, the, the...
E-one, C-one?
I mean, E-one, C-one.
E-one, C-one. Any others? Chair'll entertain a motion, approve. All others?
Move to approve.
Have a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Azzi, item E-five.
Yeah, E-five, Mr. Mayor. I just had a couple of questions about this agreement. Number one, I'm not sure if it meets like all of our other agreements for dispatch, if it's the same as the other one, so I'd like to follow up on that. But one on the payment terms. It says that they're gonna be paying three, four different items. The percentage of their dispatch calls, the amount equivalent to the salary and benefits of one public safety dispatcher, and the amount equivalent to one seasonal dispatcher. But are those on top of each other?
Daniel Johnson, IT manager, for the record. Dave, yes, those are added together to create the total for the year.
So they'll be paying for one public safety officer, one seasonal officer. And then, on top of that, then is the percentage of their calls?
The percentage of their calls compared to the overall calls for the dispatch center, and then that percentage applied to the overall dispatch center budget. That's to account for overhead for the call takers, as well as dispatching and the supervision, and that sort of thing.
And is that the deal we have with everyone else? I mean, I think Councilman Dorch brought something else up. When they're just paying for their calls for service, there's no infrastructure. I mean, we're gonna be there whether there's any calls to this jurisdiction or not.
With the other agreements that we have, we have an agreement in place for dispatch services with you and our police department. It's very similar to that one. We have the one in place for the Truckee Meadows as part of the consolidated. We will be reworking that as part of the deconsolidation of that. That one's a little bit more, you know, tricky on the way that they currently do it, so we're gonna be revisiting that with the deconsolidation. And then we do have some agreements where there's not a monetary amount associated with, like Truckee Meadows Community College Police Department, the Washington County Alternative Sentencing. Their call volume is so little, and they share error with the other ones, so there's, there's not a charge. We provide that service for them.
And then they used to be, or they're limited to what, fifty-three thousand dollars or something like that a year, fifty-four thousand?
In past years, the yearly cap was a hundred and eight thousand. We reviewed it this time. We determined that that cap needs to be removed so that we're no longer subsidizing those dispatch services. We did work with them to basically leave that cap in place for the first half of the fiscal year. So the first two quarters are fifty-four thousand, which equates to the one oh-eight for the year. And then after that, that cap gets removed, and it's basically the calculation, and then on a quarterly basis. So the amount for the last two quarters, instead of being capped at twenty-seven per quarter, based off the calculation, would be about a hundred and forty thousand a year for this year. So it'll go up to thirty-five thousand for each of the last two quarters to Sierra Fire.
So the difference is, in this one, if we would have done this earlier, would be about ten thousand dollars to the city?
If we would have removed the cap for the entire amount of the contract, it would be about sixteen thousand to the city.
And so why can't we remove the cap for the entire year?
We felt in good faith that cap has been in place for a long time. Part of the issue was when we started to renegotiate the contract for this year, the dispatch consolidation talks and working group were getting together, so we actually delayed with Sierra Fire the talks on the contract with them to see where that dispatch consolidation may or may not go. That was not progressing at the speed that we wanted to, so then we renegotiated the, or started to renegotiate with Sierra Fire as well. They had already had it in their budget for the entire year at one oh-eight. That's what was in the past. We felt that it would be unfair, basically, to say, no, not at all. We're gonna lift it for the whole year. So we compromised with them, and went half the year at the cap, and then removed the cap for the second half of the year.
I think that personally, that this should be, we've been subsidizing this forever, that we should lift the cap on the whole year, and then we could proceed with this. I mean, sixteen thousand is sixteen thousand.
Well, as short as everything is, I don't know why we're not.
I'll make a motion then to approve this contract, but it's effective, the cap is lifted effective July first of two thousand eleven.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Guston, item E-four.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a brief comment about the agenda item. It is the thirty-five hundred dollars from the Ward One NAB for the downtown, the production of the hanging flower baskets. And just to reiterate that, I know the council committed to make up the difference, whatever that would be, to get the, to keep those again for next year. I'd like to encourage our other council members and their NABS to also come forward and put some money towards this. I know the baskets are downtown, but they enhance the whole city. So congratulations to Ward One for stepping up and, and contributing thirty-five hundred dollars out of their community pride grant funds. I hope the other council members can convince their, their neighborhood advisory boards to do something similar. And I will move to approve E-four.
Have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now we go to item E-one, C-one.
Yeah, C-one, four.
C-one, four. Okay. Ms. Frazel?
Yeah, on this one, is, is staff bringing back something, I believe? I, I thought we were gonna do a moratorium until we were able to look at these issues. Councilwoman Zodra, this was your agenda item. Because I, I mean, as we had mentioned, when these had come forward before, we're starting to see a proliferation of these types of a stat. I mean, just look at the agenda. We had one polled, but it looks like, there's two on this particular agenda. We had some on the agenda before, and, and quite a few on the agenda before that, Mike. So I thought we were gonna put a, a, a policy in place for council to review before we moved forward on, on these types of, of licenses.
Michael Chomp, Business Relations Manager for the Business License Division. I think we, last council meeting, provided a memo with the discovery of the ability for council to put conditions on these types of licenses, on second-hand merchandise licenses, that we would not pursue the moratorium, but we can certainly continue to pursue that, if that's the will of the council.
I, I didn't recall that we were lifting that. I, I recalled on those particular applications that, because they were already in the works, that staff determined that those could be conditions. But again, this goes back to the overall issue, Mr. Mayor and council, about the whole issue of pawn shops and how difficult it is for those particular licensees, where they can go in the city, the distance requirements. This circumvents that whole process, and now again, we're having this all come on the agenda. And I had mentioned these concerns before. We don't have any policy in place for these types of establishments, and I, I think it's gonna, they're gonna continue to grow.
Well, we can bring, we can bring a policy back. We, obviously, you have the option to do a moratorium on these types of businesses. We are looking at Title Four and Title Five for a rewrite, and part of that examination is looking at that section of the code.
I suggest we probably look at a moratorium until we get these rules readdressed.
I thought that's what we were doing. That was the intent. No, no, you're right. I'm, I'm just confirming what you're saying, Mr. Mayor. That really was the intent when I made the motions several weeks ago.
Okay, yeah. We may have misunderstood what the council's direction was on that, but we'll, we'll correct that, and if, and we'll bring something back on, for a moratorium.
But what if we hold these up until we finish?
That's your discretion, to do that.
Well, it's not our dis...
No.
Yeah, I mean, that's the problem, though, but, I mean, I'm sorry, this is just wrong. We had asked for the direction to come back. The council had concerns about this. I'd like the police department to weigh in on it, too. We have certain regulations that we deal with when it comes to the pawn shops. I'm, I'm not comfortable approving this today. I thought that we were gonna have the moratorium in place so council would have time to, to set some policy guidelines on, on these particular establishments, so that's why I pulled it today. I think it was clearly expressed. I'm sorry that there may have been a misunderstanding, but I think it was pretty clearly expressed.
Okay. Yeah, we can, if you want to postpone this for future council meeting. This particular business is not open and operating at this time.
Well, you, you've already...
Into the same issue that we ran into last... Into the same issue that we ran into last time.
Well, you just approved three more before this, or did you pull all these for discussion?
No, the other one was pulled, Mr. Mayor. I believe you had pulled that.
That's correct, the other one was pulled.
The other one was pulled, and the other ones had to deal with clothing and furniture.
Right.
But this one is specific to the precious metals, and I didn't see any payday check. I believe those, we already have policy in those on code. But this is the only one, correct, Mike? Because you had pulled the other one, Mr. Mayor.
On this agenda?
Yeah.
Yes. And there are other applications in the Business License Office as well, for the same type of business. But we can, if you want to postpone this, we can do that.
Mike, we had discussion that the day that we have that conversation at the council table, that gives fair notice to the community that any future action would not be acceptable until we get the information and take further action. We've been advised of that from legal counsel previously.
Yeah, we can, and it may be a miscommunication on my part as well, but we can postpone this if you'd like.
Mr. Isaac?
Yeah, I guess what we have to do is we have to ask the City Attorney's Office to go over the minutes and see if we actually did impose it. Because I thought we had discussed that or not, whether it's miscommunication or not. Have to go over, look at the official record of the city, see if we did that, because postponing this issue doesn't help if we don't have a moratorium in place.
Right.
So if we have a moratorium in place, then we probably could deny these, or at least wait until after that's over. But that's what this all hinges on, is did we form a moratorium or not? Was that our intention?
Mr. Heschel.
Yeah, I'm okay. I'm okay with continuing it, Mr. Mayor.
Somebody give me a motion for continued?
I'll make to continue this item, and I think that's a good idea to reflect the minutes. Also, Councilwoman Zadra's agenda item that specifically was, I believe, on the agenda for this particular discussion that resulted in moratoriums, so I would like the minutes reviewed.
You want to continue? It's legal counsel until time certain, or?
Tracy J, Reno City Attorney's Office. Just do a motion to continue. We'll work with staff and get it back on your agenda.
Okay, till the next agenda item, I mean, next meeting.
That's fine.
Okay. Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right, at this time, we'll go to item L8. The update discussion, potential direction to staff regarding Occupy Reno movement, including public property location, special event permit, and fees.
Hi, Robert Tuna Townsend, Ward 1. I'm speaking on behalf of the, as Sam pointed out, we're actually a preoccupation at this point. This is the proposal for the occupation of Reno.
Sir, did you fill out an application to speak?
Yes.
In your name?
Robert Townsend.
Okay. She didn't give me that one.
Oh, I thought it was being handed in by somebody else, and so...
They didn't, they didn't give one?
No. But this, yeah, this is...
I'll let you go ahead and speak, and then I'll have you come back up and fill out a report.
I'll actually, this is the first time I've spoken for the General Assembly of the Occupy Reno movement, and I'm hoping it's the last time. I'd like to see some different faces out in front, and other colors and genders. This is the proposal for the occupation of Reno. We are here today in hopes of expediting the process of our occupancy, and to request that the Reno City Council considers waiving all fees related to the Moana Pool site, for which we have already applied. We request that the Reno City Council grant this waiver in recognition of Occupy Reno's desire to legally occupy public property in a safe and regulated manner, in contrast to the manner of citizens in other communities occupying public property without regard to establish rules and regulations. We intend to establish a site, or sites, for long-term lawful assembly, with the intention of peacefully occupying both 240 West Moana Lane, the Moana Pool, and the now-closed RTC City Center. The right to peacefully assemble is ours, and that being said, we recognize the various restrictions the City of Reno has in place for public health and safety, and are committed to working with the city to comply with those restrictions. We accept both, we accept Mayor Bob Kachell's kind offer to grant Occupy Reno access to the now-closed downtown bus station, in addition to the Moana Pool site, for which we have already applied. The purpose of our occupations will be to have central locations where our movement can build cohesion, discuss and raise issues of importance to a vast, the vast majority of Americans, provide education for participants in the movement, and the general public on the more complex issue, areas of education, healthcare, economics, energy usage, and alternatives, agriculture, demographic trends, and other areas that affect the lives of people here in Reno, the state of Nevada, the nation, and the world. By way of consensus, the Occupy Reno General Assembly has agreed on our intent to, wherever possible, not only maintain the quality of any sites we inhabit, but to actively improve our places of occupation, leaving no trace of our presence behind, save those improvements. Occupy Reno, through the generosity of local residents and businesses, has in place the necessary resources to help make possible our use of public property. To effectively and lawfully address issues as they arise, our organization has developed the following committees. Legal, for compliance with codes, regulations, and health and safety requirements, and a liaison with the city, county, state, and federal regulatory agencies. Community outreach, addressing community-related issues such as child literacy and reviving or assisting public services that have been cut or restricted due to budgetary constraints. Media tech, or communication, relaying of information to the public and private sectors in order to raise awareness on a local and global level. We are aware of privacy and filming issues as they relate to filming permits, and shall apply for those permits when the occasion arises. Infrastructure committee has to do with the management of the occupation sites and logistics, including energy sources, structures, and lighting, water, and sanitation, environmentally sound waste disposal, et cetera. Finance, maintenance of financial accounts, bookkeeping, and the administration of all income and dispersments in an appropriate and transparent fashion. As Occupy Reno's numbers grow, we understand that additional restrictions may come up. In such instances, we will adapt our plans and operations to remain within legal bounds. We acknowledge the need for personal security for the benefit of all those who may wish to either participate. May I finish?
You about wrapped up, or you got a better?
Just about wrapped up.
Okay, wrap it up.
All right. To public safety and security and personal security for people who wish to occupy the site or move around and through it. Health and safety is our biggest concern, and we intend to meet regularly with both police and fire department personnel to receive their guidance and discuss issues as they arise. Moana Pool, well, you have the printed copy of this, and...
Yes. I would like to correct one thing in your statement.
Yes.
The mayor of the city, Robert A. Kachell, did not make any commitment on the bus terminal. It was discussed that night in the crowd, and I told him to get in touch with our special project person, and we would look at it.
All right. Stand corrected.
I just wanted, I just wanted to clear it up.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor Kachell, and city council members, for allowing us to speak today. Many have asked me, what does the Occupy movement stand for? Most understand the practical math, 99% us versus 1% them. However, the overall meaning of the movement gets lost in translation. My individual answer is, we just want to be heard by the representatives that we elected. It happens all too often that the candidates for any elected office will say what the people want to hear. Them once voted in as a representative of the people, they will make decisions that directly hurt the ones who have helped him or her get elected. Oftentimes, these decisions are fueled by political gain or by money, which we all know is the root of all evil. What happened to what is best for the 99%? What kind of change needed, or the reasons why others have joined this movement, vary. While the Occupy movement may have started with Wall Street, the voices of the 99% spread like wildfire. If our elected officials close their eyes and ears to the basic needs of its constituents, then that sets our communities up for upheaval. Occupy Reno wants to work with the local politicians and this council, and occupying sites here in Reno. We are entitled to free assembly and free speech, as guaranteed by the Constitution. I am hoping that our local citizens and this council will not turn a deaf ear to our cause, or that the people of Reno will close their eyes to the 99% Occupy movement. We all just want our voices heard. For so long we have suffered silently, allowing the income gap between rich and poor to grow substantially, with no way to fight it, until now. The voices of the people are shouting for your help. Could I please have a show of hands that stand with Occupy Reno and its willingness to work with public officials to effect change here locally? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Won't take up much of your time.
Sorry.
I'm just here on behalf of myself, and as a delegate of the Reno industrial workers of the world, to lend our voice in favor of the proposition that the Moana Pool area be made available to the Occupy Reno people without fee. We believe that Occupy Reno performs a valuable public service in terms of providing a forum for discussion and debate, in terms of moving toward a society that is not totally dominated by money. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. R.A. Drew?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and city council. Thank you very much for having this item on the agenda, and thank you for your attention to this issue. Whether you like it or not, you're a part of history. It's being made right now. What you do may have consequences that you can't even imagine in the long run. So I believe that I can speak for many here, that our thoughts are with you as these issues are being decided. I would like to add my support to the council and the mayor, working with Occupy Reno, to open up this area here, in the downtown area, where so many homeless are located, where so many homeless hotels are located, where I am located, because I am a homeless victim of the economic system in this state. I am an injured worker. I used to work for the Yucca Mountain Project, US Department of Energy, and I have been fighting for my workers' compensation benefits for 10 years. According to the workers' compensation insurer, the litigation, in my case alone, should bring the state of Nevada over $400,000 in revenue in the form of due administrative fines. That is, the laws are already on the books, the violations have already been committed, and the Department of Business and Industry, if it does its job, should be receiving checks totaling over $400,000, but somehow that's not happening. Meanwhile, I find out that teachers are being terminated, that public services are being cut, police, fire, education, higher education, while the corporations are being allowed to violate the law, and while the state of Nevada has laws on the books that say that the corporations are supposed to be stopped, and they're not being stopped. That's my individual issue, and it is the issue that, as far as I can tell, is only going to be addressed as the Occupy Wall Street and the Occupy Cities movement progresses. So my thoughts are with you. If anyone is a praying type of person, I believe that their prayers are with you. You are making history. Please make the right decisions. Please make Reno actually a showpiece in the Occupy movement. Reno can do that. You've heard of Too Big to Fail? Reno is small enough to succeed in the Occupy movement. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, would you please come back? I forgot to have you identify yourself for the record when you started.
R.A. Drew, the last name D is in David, R-E-W. Injured worker, victim of corporate nonsense and Nevada's corrupt workers' compensation system.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Now, do I have anybody else who wants to speak before I bring it back to the step? Come up, sir. You'll have to fill out a form when you're finished.
I did, sir.
Oh, they didn't give me one. Thank you, sir. Please identify yourself for the record, and go ahead.
R.D. Bravo.
Okay.
I want to address two issues. One of them is the homeless problem. I propose, there's a fence and a gate around the immediate area of the area for the homeless over there, right?
Yep.
There's a fence and a gate, there's two gates. Well, it's fenced in. And what I propose is, these people that come to use the facilities there allow themselves to be screened. It might go a long way towards correcting the problem, or at least controlling it. The second issue is the matter of these dumpsters that are located right in the center of the parking lots of some of these motels, probably all of them, most of them. And they draw flies and other creatures. Maybe the city can look into that. I don't like swatting flies, you know?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir, very much. Having no other public comment on Occupy, I'll now ask for a staff report. Staff? Wait a minute. Do you have, what's your name?
Mike Rotman. I'm not on there, but I'll fill out a form.
Okay, if you'll fill out one, come on up.
Couple of things is, first off, you know, I've not been involved in a lot of political action stuff, and...
Identify yourself for the record.
Oh, Mike Rotman, and I'm here to support the Occupy Reno. Like I say, I've been working with these people for a while, and I'm really impressed with their civic responsibility and their mental attitude towards it. There is, there's constantly this force that says, "I want to occupy here, I want to do this, I want to do that," and they're constantly saying, "No, we have to do it right." So if you're, if you're looking for a good group of people to work with, these are the people to work with on this. I also want to talk about free speech. I'm out of my league a little bit, I'm not a lawyer, so, you know, I may misspeak a few things. But the Supreme Court has constantly defined free speech in a way that seems very clear, that symbolic speech is very, very, it's protected. Flag burning, for instance, no speech involved. It's the act itself that's the speech that has to be protected. When Citizens United came along, they said the act of giving money to a candidate is a speech that has to be protected. I would argue that an occupation, a long-term occupation, is a symbology that should be protected as well. Number one message that the Occupy movements have is that we exist, we're not going away, and we won't be ignored. We've been ignored for a long time. Part-time occupations miss that point. A permanent occupation site, or a long-term occupation site, defines that point explicitly. So I would say, like I say, it's a form of speech, it's a form of speech that I don't think can be done in any other way, and I just hope the council supports this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any others? Any others? All right, I'm going to break it. Okay, raise your hand, come on. Now, look, guys, if somebody's got a hand to raise, let's raise it and get it up, so I can, we can move this along. Identify yourself for the record, sir.
My name is Jared Dalen. I've been a resident of Northern Nevada my whole life. I would like to thank the city and the mayor, or the city council and the mayor, for allowing us to speak today. I stand here before you as a sovereign man that represents the original republic of this country. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that we are endowed by our Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, that to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consented of the governed. We have two governments in existence today. This is illustrated in Supreme Court Justice Marshall Harland's dissenting opinion in Downs versus Bidwell in 1901. I quote, "Two national governments exist, one to be maintained under the Constitution with all its restrictions, the other to be maintained by Congress, outside and independently of that instrument." District of Columbia Organic Act of 1871 incorporated the federal government, and it is defined under Title 28, United States Code, Section 3002, 15A, as a federal corporation. it is defined under Title 28, United States Code, Section 3002, 15A, as a federal corporation. The current governance has usurped the liberties of the sovereign men and women of the republic incrementally and fraudulently because Congress was adjourned, sindi, in 1860 and was never lawfully reconvened. Here we are 151 years later with an out-of-control de facto corporate governance that has tainted the name of our republic as well the peoples of this great country. What happens today is going to reflect our future generations inevitably. I ask the city to understand that we, the people, are in the process of re-establishing the original de jure government peacefully and ask you to join our fight. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. One thing I want to make a statement before staff comes up. Councilman Azee and I and several other staff members went out Thursday night and met and saw the group together. There were two or three people that got up and said violence and all this type of stuff, but 99% of them all said no and they voted those people down. They showed that they want to work with us and things, and we've told them we want to work with them, so I'm gonna turn it over to staff now. There is a blog out that said I said this or that about the banking business. I did not speak that night at all. I met the next day with three individuals, visited with them, we talked about the movement. I told them I supported their rights to free speech and everything else and to do what they want to do, and they've all agreed to do it lawfully. And I told them, I think I mentioned to them, they missed part of their project because they're taking a shot at Wall Street. Really, they need to look at their United States Senators and congressmen and different people like that instead of Wall Street, because Wall Street really doesn't care, but those other people have the vote to change things. But I do, they were very respectful, very nice, and very well-conducted and very well-organized. I was very proud of them. Staff, I'll turn it, Mr. Azee, you have anything?
All right.
All right, staff.
Good afternoon, Jamie Schrader, Senior Management Analyst. To bring you up to date, Occupy Reno did approach us a few weeks ago to inquire about how to occupy a public space indefinitely, which would definitely be different than exercising their freedom of speech as far as a demonstration goes. And so, what we did was we recommended they go through the special event permit process. This is a gray area for us. We have never, we don't have precedent set yet on having an event go longer than seven days. And so, what we have been doing is working diligently with the Occupy Reno group, listening to what they would like to achieve, as well as figuring out how to make that balance with the public safety infrastructure that we're responsible for providing to make sure that this is a safe event. We have met with police and fire and Public Works. We have a few more meetings left to go, and the district health department has been involved as well. And as soon as we can get approval from all of those different departments, the Occupy Reno movement should be able to occupy the Moana site indefinitely. What we are asking for, as far as direction from council, is if they have requested to see if we can do some fee waivers, as well as use the RTC, the old RTC city center. That location would not be occupied on a 24/7 basis, it would just be a staging area so that when they did their demonstration marches in the downtown area, they had a place to meet up, because the city plaza will hopefully have a nice rank construction starting soon. And with that, I'll take any questions, and several of the facilitators are here as well if you would like to talk to them, if you have some more questions from them.
Ms. Farazza.
Yeah, Jamie, how much are the fees associated with the special use permit or special event permit?
For the Moana Pool site, it's $35 a day, and we are looking to issue a 30-day permit because this is something new, so we all agreed upon 30 days to see how well that works out. So, that's roughly $1,500 or $1,100.
Okay, and then, so the permit, after the first initial 30 days, then they would apply for another 30 days and so on and so on. Did we check with legal if it goes beyond a certain point? Because it sounds like, from what I'm hearing, they want to remain for a long period of time. Would then a special use permit be triggered, or how does that work under our current codes?
Craig Skaw from the City Attorney's Office. Councilman Farazza, that was one of the reasons why we suggested that we work on a 30-day permit initially, because this is new and there are a lot of issues, and also no certainty about what everybody wants to do yet. We felt that the 30 days would allow the parties to continue to talk, as well as look into the potential legal issues. You've raised a couple, and certainly there are a number of other potential legal issues that need to be addressed. So, this buys everybody some time if we can do a 30-day permit out there, and then we can provide more information to everybody as we go along here.
And then restrooms and sanitary issues, how are those being addressed under the permit? And I don't know if that's for cadence or since this is being occupied on a full-time basis.
Through the special events permit process, we've adopted Washington County's District Health Department requirements, and so that's where they are involved. And they have set some guidelines for this group to follow as far as cooking, disposal of trash, and then use of restrooms. And so, the district health department has said that they do need to provide a weekly trash pickup service, as well as a certain number of portable restrooms on-site with hand-wash stations.
And have they secured those already, or are we asking, are they asking for the permit first, then they go and secure those things?
They would need to secure that first.
Okay, so then I would ask the Occupy Reno group if they've secured those facilities up.
Hello? My name is Jared Lowell, I'm a member of the Occupy movement. As far as sanitation is concerned, we have gotten quotes on the restroom and pickup. As of now, considering the winter months approaching, and we're considering our numbers to be significantly low during that time, we are planning on having anywhere from six to 10 portable potties, portable restrooms on-site for the occupiers to use, and...
Have you secured those? I mean, have you paid for them? Are they on-site? Because what staff's saying, you have to have those facilities secured before we can even help you with the events permit.
Right, that can be taken care of, if not today, tomorrow, and will be handled, and yes.
Okay, and then what about the trash pickup?
The trash pickup, we are working something out with City Trash Removal to take care of that. We have our own trash containers, and because we are working on creating as little waste as possible and not leaving a footprint behind, the trash containers we have as of now will be more than adequate until we have a pickup arrangement set up for that.
But where are you disposing the trash? Because you still have to pay for some fee, even if you have your own cans for that trash to be collected.
Right, we're arranging a pickup for that.
Okay, with waste management?
With waste management, also looking into possibly using local, any kind of local trash pickup to do that as well.
Okay, and then, when do you anticipate that being secured?
We're trying to move this thing along as fast as possible. I understand there's about three more things that we need to take care of, and we're going to be handling that by the end of the week.
Okay, and is the site being occupied 24 hours right now?
No, it's not.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Ms. Azee.
Yeah, Jamie, how did we get, arrive at $35? Is Moana Pool on our list of what we charge for?
The $35 fee is actually the parking lot fee that we charge for all of the parks.
And is that considered one of our parks? It's on our schedule of, the people can rent out the parking lot?
I would have to defer to Julie.
Julie Conway, Parks Recreation Community Services Director. It's not specifically on the schedule, however, what was done was, since we have other parking lots that are similar, that's how it was extracted or extrapolated.
So, I'm curious, if we were to raise this fee, does, would it hurt the city general fund in any way? Because we're not getting, what would we be doing with that $1,100?
It would go into the general fund, so...
Okay, so it's not budgeted for, we're not losing anything if we don't get this money?
At this point, it was not budgeted for. We didn't anticipate that that was going to be rented.
Okay, and then, our deal, that is, is that being considered a city park, then?
The Moana site is a city park. We do have a park there. There is a, there is a park right next, right next to the building.
The last merry-go-round in Reno.
So, we do have people that go to that park, and it is used.
Now, don't we have, in our agreement with Waste Management, the franchise agreement, don't they do all the pickup at city parks?
They do. I don't know whether that one is included because it is a smaller site and it may be one that...
But they're supposed to do things on all city parks.
They do.
So, if we were to do, put a dumpster there, they would have to pick that up as part of their franchise agreement, I would think.
I just don't know whether that one is included because it is such a small site and most of the trash that is, I mean, that site is a fairly, is a fairly small site, so I don't know whether we, whether we just use it as staff, whether it picks it up.
But I'm just saying, we probably could say that and just put that on the list of they have to go around and pick that one up, too.
I could check to see.
Is what I'm guessing. And then, only if they require a special event permit, do they have to go through the health department process? Is that what we're saying here?
Correct.
If this is a city-sponsored event, what would happen?
It would still end up needing to go through the special event permit process.
Okay. Those are all my questions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Guston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question, Jamie. And I'm sure from what the speaker said, they have the best of intent to occupy the area and keep it clean, et cetera. Is there, you've talked about some kind of a bond, so when, whenever that time elapses, that is over, that there would be a bond to make sure, like they do, example for Burning Man, there's money put aside that if there's anything that left behind, that there'll be some fund there to clean it up?
We have not had that discussion. We have required the liability insurance, and they have obtained a policy for the, naming the city as additional insured for a million. This group does have a leave-no-trace-behind decorum, and so they are not planning on leaving anything behind and reusing whatever they do bring to the Moana site.
I understand, but if things are left behind or something needs to be fixed or brought back to the condition before the occup, the people occupied the park, where do we, where do we get that money to take care of that?
That would be part of the insurance.
And part of the insurance, so covered.
It should be, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Craig Skaw from the City Attorney's Office. There is, I believe, a provision, I don't believe there's a specific bonding provision in our special events ordinance. There is a provision that says that to the extent that the, whatever fees they've paid, that that doesn't cover the services that are necessary, that we can then pursue them for those fees. So, there isn't a mechanism to try and go after somebody, but there's no upfront bond provision in the ordinance.
Well, we see that we have provisions to go after people as we phrase it later on, and that dissipates if not there. What we have is concrete, we know that if something happens, then it will be done, because that's a group of search afterwards.
Yeah, at the moment, there's, there may be some general authorization within the ordinance that I can find. There's no specific provision that addresses bonding in that ordinance.
The reason for questioning is not penalizing anybody, it's just, let's know going in what the obligations are on both sides and how it can be helped with the city of Reno if it doesn't progress as stated in the public comment. And I hope it does. I hope that they do, are able to do it in the long term. Much be, just be penalizing, not penalizing, but to learn what our boundaries are, what we need to do, and what they need to do.
Counselor? Do we have the right to be able to waive fees?
That is...
I thought under a charter, we couldn't.
That is a, one of the things that I hoped you would ask or I would have brought up. It is a serious question whether we do or not. It's likely we do not have that ability to simply waive fees here. There is a support provision for the city council that has some specific provisions, too, and there are, again, significant legal issues about whether or not they qualify for that support. So, I don't want to make a commitment right now, I just need to alert you that that is something that legal will definitely want to look at.
And you can do that in rapid motion?
Yes.
Do, if, and what is this total fee you're talking about?
For 30 days, it's roughly $1,100.
Roughly, excuse me.
If I may...
Yes.
Craig Skaw again. That would be the rental fee, but to the extent that other potential services are required of the city, that they can't meet on their own, then special events fees can rise from there, depending on the specific arrangements that can be made.
I'll ask you another question while you're there. If we decided to take each one of us $250 out of our discretionary fund, is this a legal organization we could make a contribution to?
Right now, I believe the answer to that is no, Your Honor. There are state laws that, statutes that require or discuss the granting of money to an event, to a, to an individual, and for one other thing, it has to be to a 501(c)(3) public entity and for a public purpose, so they may not meet those requirements at this point.
Okay, now, how long, I mean, they're wanting to do this pretty soon. So, how long are we going to take putting this together or doing whatever we can to help these guys and go?
Well, if they can get the final site layouts to us and meet the requirements of the health district, so get the waste management contract or whichever local trash group they're going to use in place, as well as the portable restrooms, the sooner they can get that in, the sooner we can get everybody to sign off. In an ideal world, we should hopefully be able to sign it off by 5:00 PM tomorrow.
Okay, and so, you'll keep us posted on these fees and stuff like that, and then we'll see what we can do or can't do. You and legal counsel will keep us posted?
Yes.
Okay, anything else?
No, I, I agree. I think we should work with them, Mr. Mayor, based on some of the comments that I heard, but it does sound, at least from staff's perspective, it's still a work in progress. Even in, even in the information that we were provided, I mean, we obviously have to have staff present, we've got safety issues with the police department, and I think that all those should be sorted out, and then that way staff can get back to us and see what we can do.
Yep.
I agree. Ms. Azee.
Just gonna make a motion, Mr. Mayor, if there's no more discussion.
Any other discussion at this point?
There might be some discussion on the motion.
I do, and we'll ask for that as soon as you make your motion.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if 30 days is enough for everybody to get everything in line, so my motion is to grant a three-month permit. We'll see what happens at the end of three months. That we don't set a precedent by waiving the fees, but I believe since it's not on our schedule, Mr. Mayor, that we shouldn't charge the fees in the first place. There's nothing that they, we can point to to say, "This is what the rental was," so that's how we get around that issue. That we're not waiving any fees, it's just, they weren't in our schedule to pay them, so I don't think they should, they should pay them. That we also take the fence down around the RTC site that they could use, that's going to save us some money, too. I think that's a rental that we're paying to keep that up. And that it'd come back to us, but we grant at least a three-month permit. And I believe that the leave-no-trace, I know some of the people in this organization, and they're going to live up to that.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second for discussion. Mr. Dorch.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with a three-month timeframe. I think this is something new, something that staff's kind of get, trying to get their arms around, and I think the idea of, you know, doing this for 30 days to see how it works, how it operates, I think that makes a lot of sense. So, I would prefer not to go three months, and I don't want to, and waiving the fees or not charging fees, I don't want to set a precedent on that. I mean, this, I mean, you might see other groups like this start to form, you might see other incidents happening where we've got, you know, people, other people coming to try and do similar things and want us to waive fees for them, too. I think we need to treat them like we would treat any other event, so...
Okay, Mr. Guston.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I too agree that free speech and free assembly is something that is part of our basic right. I think we should honor that. I'm a little bit hesitant about the three months, but you know what? I'm willing to, people came here in good faith and pledged, if you will, in their own words, what they want to do, so I'm willing to go on with that. My only hesitation is, as I stated before, is to make sure that the city's whole, whenever this, this occupation ends, or when people move on, that everything that we said and they've said would be done, is done. So, I don't have any hesitation about... or when people move on, that everything that we said and they've said would be done is done. So I, I don't have any hesitation about that. And I'd like to give everybody a first opportunity, so I, I will support the motion of three months. I, I don't really have a problem with that. I know, Councilman Dorch, I can understand. It's, it's new, it's evolving. We don't know exactly what it is, but maybe we can do it in a way that, that benefits them, benefits everybody else, and certainly the city's not hurt by it. And that's what we think we need to look at, is we need to protect the investment that the city has in it. Precedent setting, that does bother me a little bit, but, but let's work on that. That's why those people are here, and that's why our staff's here. We're going to work on it and see where we go from here.
Ms. Edra.
I would need to hear from staff, Cadence, or the thirty days that you identified. What was the rationale behind that? And is that something that you do believe is reasonable?
For the record, Cadence Smatievich with the City Manager's Office. Councilwoman, when we originally anticipated or discussed with the group how we would go about this, for purposes of the Health Department and some of the other entities, they had requested a start date and an end date. We wanted to give as much time as possible and thought, as Ms. Schroeder mentioned, that thirty days was a good amount of time to see how things went, to allow us as staff to, to evaluate and research what our options would be. As Councilwoman Farazza asked, does it become a special use permit? Potentially, you know, do they form a 501(c)(3) and we go through the process to lease them that space? There's, there's a number of options that are available to us, and we thought that that thirty-day timeline would be adequate. It would give them a, a significant amount of time to, to be at that site, to determine if that site was meeting their needs. And, and so I don't want to say it was an arbitrary number, but it was something that was discussed among the parties and agreed to initially.
And if they do determine that they would like to secure a 501(c)(3), would thirty days accommodate that?
I believe that it would. I, I think they, they, they apply, I mean, you know, I don't want to speak for the federal government on how long it takes them to, to provide that designation, but I think at the point that you apply, you receive a letter from them that says that, that you've gone through that application process. And I believe when we've worked with groups in the past in obtaining their 501(c)(3) status for the purposes of a sponsorship or something else, that that has been sufficient. The fact that they have, that they can show us the, the application. So, and one other thing that I do want to mention, sort of, whether or not the council takes action for a thirty-day or a ninety-day permit, if the Health Department is, and they're working through some issues because they have some restrictions from the Nevada Revised Statutes on Temporary Food Service Permits, and, and potentially will have to, after the initial fourteen-day period, look to issue an annual permit. If those things cannot be worked out, we potentially would have to revoke the permit. So I just want to be sure that the council's aware of that, that, that the health issues, that the Health Department has jurisdiction over are somewhat out of our staff's control. And, and we're doing everything that we can to facilitate that with the Health Department, but that if the Health Department is unable to permit them past that fourteen-day period, we may have to revoke the permit. Certainly not our, our hope or our intent, but something that is somewhat out of our control.
Legal counsel.
Craig Scott, City Attorney's Office. I, I would caution the City Council about the precedents that they potentially set for any other type of event. And I would also indicate that the group here has been very good in cooperating and felt that the thirty days was appropriate, recognizing that there were many issues to work through. I think even in terms of some of the legal issues, like the legality of a waiver here, to the extent that you may want to consider that, perhaps there's a middle ground where you hold in abeyance the need to actually come forward and pay that, that fee initially until the, the research can be done and a decision made, where, as opposed to simply waiving it initially. But I think that the, the idea of thirty days, if more time is needed, certainly another thirty-day permit allows everybody to continue to work this process through as we go forward. So, so far, both sides, the staff and the event people, have been working very well together. And so I, I would encourage your encouraging this process to continue in its current form. Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Asche.
Yeah, I just need...
Excuse me, I thought you were, I'm sorry. Ms. Edra.
Thanks for that, that clarification. I mean, if I understand what the group is attempting to do, it really is to help to find some equity. And that's why I have some concern from that, that very basis of, of creating a precedence. I mean, we do try to, to have all of our groups and individuals that utilize any of our, our facilities to have a fair shake. And, and starting a new precedent is of some concern to me. As long as we have a clear understanding that if the thirty days didn't cut it, that we could extend it, you know, for an additional time while you work out some of the, the legal services, I think that that would be more respectful of that equitable issue.
Mr. Asche.
Yeah, just, Dave, to get clarification on, on the motion, I guess, what's, what's the rationale for not just limiting it to the Moana site? And then, I'm okay with the ninety days, from the perspective that, I mean, we have to come to an agreement with the group. It's going to be subject to other permits. If something goes awry, whether it's ninety days or thirty days, I mean, the, the permit could be terminated, obviously. So I'm okay with the ninety days, but why not just limit it to the Moana site and let's get our feet on the ground before we extend it? Take the fence down on the RTC site.
Thank you, and a couple of things. Number one, I'll talk about why I want ninety days. I might have made a different motion in May, but I heard a couple of these people on, on the bus this morning talking about it, and quite frankly, I know they have a lot of energy right now, but I'm curious what it's going to look like in December. And I think they're curious to what it's going to look like in December, about whether, and we're, we're trying to tell them to make decisions in these fair-weathered months, that they might change their mind in two months. So we're all spending our staff time and their effort doing something that may or may not peter out in December. That's the rationale for the ninety days now. I might not have made that in May because people might stay there all the summertime. So it gives both chances and opportunity to really see how committed this group is. I think this group here is committed, but that gives us some time to look at. The reason for the RTC site downtown is, when I was there Thursday, it was very clear that the group is divided in certain parts about being at Moana, and some people wanted to be downtown, and they wanted a downtown site. We've been trying for a long time, I think, to take that fence down and make that an active site, so people would use it and it would be used. I don't know what the harm in letting these, this group use it as opposed to anyone else use that site. I mean, it's city-owned property. It's not a park site. We don't have any fees to it. And then, again, on, on the Moana site, nobody's ever used it. It's been an abandoned building for how long? And we're going through all this worry about this, this site that no one uses. They're picking this site because of the traffic on it. What's the harm to the city to letting them do that there? That's one of the reasons I asked the question before, is if it was a city-sponsored event, that also wouldn't set the precedent of any group coming forward. It's only if the city sort of agreed with this group that they could be city-sponsored like we do with other organizations. I mean, I, I, I'm not quite sure exactly what they're trying to do. I know the overall ninety-nine percent. But I'll remind you, Mr. Mayor, Reno is a corporation. A corporation is now a person. We're certainly not billionaires. We're the ninety-nine percent.
Dave, Dave, on the RTC site, would that be camping out on the RTC?
No, they said it'd only be, only be there for the daytime use, and they would go back to the Moana site for the, for the...
Mr. Asche, I didn't mean to cut you off.
That, that's my rationale.
Can, can I comment on that, Mr. Mayor? My concern with that is, the reason we have those fences up is because, you know, we, we were concerned with homeless and others going in there and camping out in there. And I think we take those fences down, I think we're going to create another problem. And I think the chief can chime in on this. But clearly, I mean, what they said is they don't plan on occupying this thing twenty-four seven, so the, the problem that we have with that site exists if there's no one there. And that's why, I mean, Chief, I don't know if you want to chime in, but, I mean, there was some great concern about that site being open when, when we first took that over.
Steve Pitts, on behalf of the Reno Police Department, and I'd like to reiterate what has been said repetitively up here, is this group has been wonderful with staff and definitely with the Reno Police Department. When I look at another site that we would approve, the first thing that, that comes to my attention, especially in public safety and in protecting their freedom of speech, is making sure that we have personnel there. Because there are, there are other voices out there contrary to, to the voices of Occupy Reno, and we are tracking blogs and other information. And the safety of these men and women in our community, as they assemble and do what they think is appropriate, our business, my business, is also to include their safety. So if there are several sites around Reno that we approve, I have to, in almost every case, make sure that law enforcement's there to protect their right under the First Amendment.
Okay. Young man, one of the organizers, you have something? Come up to the mic.
Well, just, Chief, Chief, do you want to comment on the, on the RTC site before though? I mean, I mean, that's, I mean, obviously, that's why we have the fences up there, is to protect that site and...
I don't see Sue here this afternoon. I know we did a site survey there, Mr. Dorch, about six months ago. There are going to, there's going to be some liability issues, Mr. Ashe, with really the facility itself and the potential for, you know, someone to be injured over there. And then, of course, if Occupy Reno is not there, the potential, as Mr. Dorch has pointed out, is, is for other people to go occupy that location, that, and that'll end up becoming a police, police issue, so.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Identify yourself for the record again.
Yes, Jared Lowell. On the point of not being at the city center bus station twenty-four seven, we didn't get to that part of our proposal because we ran out of time, but we do have in place security teams that will be there, running in shifts at the city center bus station twenty-four seven. So that place will be occupied by a minimum staff, sometimes when it's cold, but we will have a track phone on site with a direct contact to our police liaisons to handle that and to handle security of the perimeter of the entire surrounding area of not only that, not only the city center, but Moana Pool site as well. So we are committed to being there twenty-four seven to maintain the, the building and make sure that it's not harmed in any way.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. Has a clarification to the motion because it was indicated that you would grant the permit. I, are you indicating as a council that, that would be subject to insurance requirements and other legal...
And the Health Department.
Yes. I just wanted that for the record because that was unclear, if you could indicate that. Thank you.
You have to meet the Health Department codes. Well, the other thing I want to state is, I don't think the City of Reno should be in a position to revoke their license. If the Health Department, they don't meet the Health Department codes, the Health Department can revoke the license. I don't want to be in the position that the City of Reno have to do something at the bidding of the Health Department. I'm not their police agency. If they have the power to impose this, they should have the power to revoke it. I'm not going to do there and, and do what the Health Department wants to do. I mean, that's an issue, an issue I'll bring up later today. But if, if they want to revoke it, then the Health Department can, should be able to revoke that. And if they don't have the power to revoke it, they should have to come to us and explain to us why they want to revoke it, not just blank, we don't like it, so the City of Reno has to revoke the license. I mean, they might require twelve Sandy hats and there's only four people there, so that sometimes it's just not necessary. But I will make, clarify the motion that they, right now, they would have to meet the Health Department requirements and legal requirements that we have on there.
Yes, like insurance and things like that, because that protects actually the people who are a part of the event, and that's really critical to have the security.
They said they'll do all that. That's not a problem. I guess, for me, ninety days goes by in the blink of an eye. I mean, thirty days is, by the time we can call everybody together for a meeting, two weeks is gone. That's, we don't get anything done in thirty days. So that's...
Yes, ma'am.
Jamie Schroeder, Senior Management Analyst. Staff would also request clarification that the permit is good for the exterior of the, both locations and not the interior use.
Correct, absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Craig Scott, City Attorney's Office. One of my concerns in the way this is coming down is that you have a permitting process and a First Amendment group coming in here, asking for treatment as a council as opposed to through the permitting process. I would be much more comfortable in avoiding precedents for the next First Amendment advocacy group that comes through. If City Council were to give direction to staff to consider that, that be a term of the permit, but continue to allow this to go through the permitting process rather than setting this up as a separate way for a First Amendment group to come forward and get City Council attention instead of going through the permitting process. So some direction to staff would be my recommendation.
May I ask, isn't that the purpose of City Council? I mean, that's what we do. We deal with exceptions. I mean, otherwise, let's just, we might as well just fold up tent and go with our current policy.
And my, my concern is not a legal one. It is a precedent-setting one for the, the next group that comes along, that I think that would be simply a better way to handle it. Thank you.
Just again, clarification, Dave, on, on, to make sure I understand, ultimately, there's some issues that need to get worked out, insurance, et cetera. What we would be doing is authorizing staff to continue to sit down with them, work out all the details, including the police. I didn't realize they're going to have somebody there twenty-four seven and have a police liaison. I mean, it'd have to be subject to the chief's approval, would it not? I mean, they've got so many moving pieces here.
That's what I mean. It should come to us. I don't, I don't think that, I mean, I see what happens in other areas, and I'm wondering how that happened. How did the police go in with, is that a choice that the council made or a choice that the police chief made? And I think this could, I don't think this is going to get that far because these, it's been a nice group. I mean, ninety days goes by so fast.
Well, I don't want to hamstring the chief either. I'm not going to handcuff him.
No, he's going to do his job.
But you, is the motion, it comes back to us once they've worked out all those details so that we can approve the plan and the agreement with Occupy Reno? Or you, or your, your motion sounds like they're just, go do it.
But with the clarification of the City Attorney, they would have to meet all of the requirements that we, I guess it's sort of the same thing that Mr. Scott said. They still have to go through that process because they'd have to do all of, I'm just, what I've done is extended it to ninety days, waived the fee because we don't have it on the fee schedule, so that doesn't set a precedent, and it also opens the RTC. That's the only different changes that I've made, I believe, in the motion.
But what about the, the thought about not charging them the fee until legal can actually take a look at it and see if we can, if we can waive it?
It's three months.
We don't, we don't have, I, I guess I would agree with Councilman Ashe on this. We don't have a fee established. It's no different than what we had the consent on agenda earlier. I mean, then we should set a policy, I mean, on, on what our charges are going to be for these particular buildings, if we're going to have that policy. But right now, how do you charge a fee when a fee isn't in place?
But you have a special, you have a special events fee, which is about whatever it was, eleven hundred bucks.
That was, that was the, the fee to rent the parking lot.
Correct.
And that parking lot is, is not on a fee schedule.
That particular lot is not on a fee schedule.
I'm trying to get around the precedent setting that our attorneys are getting to.
And I guess just a question for you, Councilman Ashe, because I know staff and Maureen's not here and Chief's here as well. I'm hoping that we do have some sort of plan with the RTC site. We had talked about some CDGB potentially for doing various things at that location. I'm not sure if that's taking place over the next ninety days, but for clarification on the motion, would this be open to anyone then as a public plaza? I mean, I don't see how we would limit it to one group in that particular location. I mean, I can understand the Moana location because essentially it's a, a special event where people are occupying for twenty-four hours. But the RTC site, if we have another group who wants to come in, to me, it's a public plaza. It's no different than a park. How could you limit it for ninety days?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, I can assist with that. If you do create a property that creates it as an open forum for free speech, you will be setting that precedent likely.
You bring up an interesting example. Maybe on that, we should come up with the fee schedule and check, that way, they're leasing the property and they can keep off who they want to keep off. Like when someone rents Wingfield Park, they can kick out who they want to because they're renting the park. But that fee shouldn't be, be excessive. I don't know. I, I just...
We have...
We've spent more than eleven hundred dollars in staff time already.
Why do we spend a lot more in council? And I'm going to start wrapping this up. I'm going to let this young man come up and say one thing. I know I've told it to the council. Young man, come on up and introduce yourself for the record. You had something to say. After that, I'm cutting off all public comment, or we'll be here for the rest of the day. So we're going to get down and make some decisions.
My name is Tillman Wendell. I'm with Occupy Reno. Just for the record, I wanted to specify that our insurance is for the Moana Pool site and does not go to city center or the old bus stop, and is good for fifty-two days as of tomorrow.
Fifty-two?
Yes, fifty-two days.
Okay, so it doesn't cover the RTC site at this point?
No, I believe that would be a separate policy.
That would be something else you'd have to get.
And it doesn't cover 90 days?
No, 52 days is the limit, that's as long as the event insurance will go. But we are able to extend it if need be.
Let's leave it at the 30 and come back with a, Mr. Ozzy, what do you think? I mean, I don't have a problem giving them 90, but they only have insurance for 52.
When insurance policy's locked up, then...
That ends it.
They should probably extend it. If they knew they had 90, they probably could have asked for 90.
I don't see why we can't do 90, Mr. Mayor, have staff work on the agreement, as Councilman, House chef suggested. They line up at the restrooms, the other things they need to line up, comes back to us. I do feel uncomfortable with the RTC site, Councilman, just because if we're going to make it a public plaza, it should be open to the entire community, and I think that we do need some sort of policy in place there before. I want the fence to come down on that facility, I think it looks terrible, but I think we need to come up with a policy on that particular location if we are going to make it a public plaza. So Occupy Reno, whoever wants to come in can have access to the particular plaza, but until we have that in place, I think we should start with the Moana site and let staff come back to make sure everything's in line.
Are you willing to change your motion, Mr. Ozzy?
I'll change the motion for now to just include the Moana site.
Okay.
And then we'll bring it back, maybe our next meeting, we'll talk about the RTC.
Okay, staff.
Mr. Mayor, I have two clarifications questions. I want to ensure that staff understands the council direction correctly. You're not asking us to come back at your next meeting before issuing the permit. You're directing us to issue the permit in accordance with our current ordinances, which require compliance with health regulations, public safety regulations, our insurance requirement. Councilwoman Zadra, we have in the past actually had events where, because of a calendar year or when an insurance policy goes into effect, we have had actually a policy expire and then renew in the middle of the event, and what we've said is, if you're not able to provide us with a new certificate of insurance for that new term within 10 business days of the new insurance term, then that would be cause for revoking the permit. But we have had that instance in the past and have been able to work around it. So we would follow suit this time. So I just want to be sure that you're not asking us to come back to you before we issue the permit, that as long as the public health and safety issues can be addressed, as we've discussed today, that staff would issue the permit for a period of 90 days as soon as possible.
And is your motion still not to charge them anything or to put it in abeyance?
That's, my motion is not to charge, only because it's not on our schedule. I want to make that clear so it doesn't set a precedent. If we come back with an augmented schedule of that we're going to charge for that site, okay. But right now, there's nothing on there to say that we would charge any more than, what do we charge for walking on the street? There's no fee schedule for it.
You charged me $100, I don't know why.
Councilman, if I could, and I apologize, one thing that we did not mention previously...
Is it cold in here?
We do charge a $103 application processing fee, which the group has not yet paid. That is adopted as part of your fee schedule resolution, and so we would need direction as to whether or not that would be included in the fees that you do not want to charge.
They will pay that, and I will pay that. Okay?
He will pay it. All right. Are you clear, staff?
Thank you.
Because I'm getting thoroughly confused. But we have a motion, we have a second, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all very much. Mr. Guston, take over a minute.
Two bucks in receipt.
Yeah, I want the two bucks, I can give you three, but I want the two bucks. I want a two dollar bill.
Do you want to continue? Do you want to recess? Give me the, give me the... Let's, Council, let's take a five-minute recess.
Okay.
We'll be back here at 10 after.
You're welcome. I just gave him the money, I paid the fee.
Give him enough.
Let me find out where we are.
You should have a two, yeah, well, you know, a two.
All right, we'll go to ordinance adoptions.
This is number G1, this is ordinance number 6210, and ordinance annexing to and making part of the city of Reno certain specifically described territory being 1.24 acres of property located on the south side of Leroy Street, 8225 Leroy Street, 740 feet east of its intersection with Mayan Avenue, in the LLR1 Large Lot Residential 1-Acre Zoning District, Washoe County, Nevada, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
Move to adopt.
Have motion, second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Item G2.
This is ordinance number 6211, 6211, and ordinance annexing to and making part of the city of Reno certain specifically described territory being 104 acre portion of a 441.25 acre parcel of property located 1,000 feet north of the intersection of Pembroke Drive and South McCurn Boulevard, and is bounded to the north by the intersection of South McCurn Boulevard and Clean Water Way, South McCurn Boulevard to the west and to the east and south by remaining University of Nevada systems property, Washoe County, Nevada, together with other matters property relating thereto.
Have motion, second, have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item G3.
Ordinance number 6212, 6211, and ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.08 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled zoning, rezoning a 6.5 acre site located on the south side of Stone Valley Drive, 350 feet west of its intersection with Robb Drive from SPD Park Place, Special Planning District Park Place to NC Neighborhood Commercial, together with other matters probably relating thereto.
Move to adopt.
Have motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item G4.
Ordinance number 6213, ordinance amending ordinance number 6166 for the purpose of establishing regular council meeting dates for the 2012 calendar year and the month of January 2013, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
Motion?
Adopt.
Have motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Resolutions. Item H1.
Item H1, resolution number 7635, resolution averving major fund designations for fiscal year 2011.
Okay, I have a couple of questions on this.
Okay.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, the, Robert, on these in particular, one that was concerning to me was, we had several of the fund designations, specifically on the special revenue funds that were merged with the general fund. One in particular that I just wanted to bring to the council's attention, that I think we should still keep in a separate fund designation aside from the general fund, is our reserve, our stabilization fund, and there's good reason for that, because right here you have stabilization fund, that account merged with the general fund, and I think for certain purposes, we want to keep all of our reserves separate from the general fund, because we're allowed to have, I believe, 8%. So that concerned me under the special revenue funds. And then also, I was curious, and I think for the council as well, the Parks and Rec Fund, when you say operations merged with the general fund, what does that mean on that specific account? Why would we do that? Because wouldn't we want to have separate funds for the Parks and Rec Department?
The intent is to simplify the accounting so that you're not continually doing journal entries, moving activities between funds. It's easier to account for actually the transactions if it's all in the same fund. And so the intent is to try to simplify our accounting, and this is just the operations of the parks, and most of it comes from the general fund anyways. We can still track the activity, but it just makes it easier, as we saw earlier with the problem of inter-fund transfers, it eliminates that problem. So if we need to, you know, make a, do some activities in the park, we don't have to come before council and request a transfer.
Okay, and then the planning fund as well, is there a way to separate that out? I understand it's being absorbed by the general fund, but for tracking purposes?
We are still able to track any activity, even though it's absorbed in the general fund. You know, I can track how much is spent in the planning fund, we can track how much the city manager's department spends or finance or any of the other departments.
Especially track that one, we want to know.
Yeah.
Just kidding. No, I would go ahead and move to adopt this, I understand it. I still think the stabilization fund should be at a totally separate account, though. And I think council's aware of all the reasons for that.
Have motion, second, any further discussion?
Did you have issues, Robert, with that?
Well, you know, just talking to staff, the stabilization fund is, we can set up a separate reserve as, to track it as a reserve instead of as a separate fund, and that may be able to identify it easier.
Well, I think we do want to make it a separate fund. We had this issue during negotiations, and there are certain funds that are, I believe it's up to 8% of the general fund revenues we can have in a reserve account, and so I think it's got to be specifically identified as a separate account.
Well, it can be a separate account, it just can't be a separate fund, and under governmental accounting standards boards, it can't be a separate fund, it doesn't qualify as a separate fund.
Okay, so this, when it says special, it says stabilization fund, we have it under a separate fund right now.
It used to be a stabilization fund, then, under GASB 54, the rules changed and it was eliminated as an ability to be a separate fund. Yeah. Yeah, it just, it was ceased to exist under GASB, under GASB 54.
Okay, so, but it will go down as a separate account for reserves?
Correct. It's still an account in, and it's counted for, and we can still track it, but we can't have it as a separate fund.
Can I ask a question I think you're trying to ask?
Yeah.
Is this still protected in the 8% the way you're doing it from?
Yes.
That's what I think you're getting to.
All right, I have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H2.
Resolution number 7636, resolution for budget augmentations and approval of budget revisions, October 1st, 2011 through October 31st, 2011.
Have motion, second, and then discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, and I analyze these with a fine tooth comb now. I want to know what the correct various budgets under discussion, what that is actually under this budget augmentation.
The item that is called to augment budgets for various reimbursed, or correct various budgets, item number three for discussion, is just moving between payroll and services and supplies accounts. Whenever we make changes like that, we need to do that. And what happened was, is certain savings from salaries is being reassigned for operating expenditures.
Okay, and which particular fund is that?
I believe it'd be the general fund.
But which, okay, salary savings are going where?
Do we have that broken down?
So would we like, would I just kind of move here, where we move $20,000 out there and put it in Leroy, add it there, and then like this right here?
So on pages four, five, and six of the staff report, that includes the schedules, Schedule B for the general fund, it shows money being moved from one account, and that's the second column in, and those have the parentheses around them, that's a negative charge to those accounts under city council, city manager, and some other places for both services and supplies accounts. And then, as you get farther down on page, I think it's, I believe it's page five, page six, you see some of that money being moved to Parks and Recreation, planning and CD and other areas to pay for projects that we're doing in those areas.
I really think, Mr. Manager, in the future, that we should know what funds are being transferred. I mean, this, to me, is a big issue. I'm hoping we have this online checkbook, but this is very hard to read. I mean, you guys can't even tell me up here specifically what did, what we are taking away money from, the savings from salaries. I want staff to say salary savings in X are going to pay for this particular project that was adopted by council for this. And this is, this does not do this, so from someone from the public, when they're trying to find out about transfers from budgets and everything else, it's very hard to understand this document. So that's what I'm asking staff, what are we taking money from? We're getting money from salary savings, where is that salary savings going to? What specific projects? Can you tell me?
Not at this time, I can't, but what we can do...
But we're expected to approve this, and staff can't tell me what projects they're going to.
We can postpone the decision if you need that information beforehand. And what I was about to suggest with the city manager's permission is that we can do a memo to support this staff report that gives that detail, and then in future budget augmentations, provide that detail in the staff report.
Why don't we just continue this until the next meeting, and that way we can get the answers we have to have.
We certainly can do that, yes, sir.
Instead of a...
I'll withdraw my motion.
Huh?
I'll withdraw my motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you guys, I just, I think we should have the information.
You want to make a motion to continue?
I'll go ahead and make that motion, and I would request that in future augmentations, that we get all the supporting documentation on what we're actually doing, because this is actually a rather huge document, because this is what we had issues with several months ago. This is essentially you guys bringing this to council for approval.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second the motion, Mr. Mayor. Maybe the quickest way to deal with this is when you, when, next to each transfer and augmentation, just do the footnote, so that way, somebody can go to where all the footnotes are, and you'll know where it's going.
Right.
Excellent suggestion, thank you.
Okay. Motion to continue, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Parks and Rec.
Good afternoon, Susan Ballroth, Deputy City Attorney. Before council today for possible action is the exercise of the option to purchase approximately 208 acres of the North Gate property, effective October 31st, 2011, and authorization for the mayor to sign that exercise of option, as well as authorization by this body for the city manager to execute any and all required escrow documents or other documents necessary to close the transaction by November 30th, 2011.
Is this the final thing?
This is the final thing, unless there is...
Move to approve staff recommendations, I don't want to hear unless.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no, those don't count, that's it.
Thank you.
Item J4, City Attorney, approval and filing of quick claim, quiet claim, quiet title action to settle the title of the property located at these, this property.
Good afternoon, Marilyn Craig, Deputy City Attorney. This is an item before council for your approval to file a quiet title action to settle the title of property located at 111 Riverside Drive. As you know, that's property that you recently obtained through a tax deed. When we went to revert it to acreage, the title company did not want to sign off because there's an additional two-year period for... there's an additional two-year period for issues to be raised regarding the title. There was interest by certain members of the city to use this property for re, I don't want to say redevelopment, for affordable housing. And if you are desirous of moving forward on that, then it would be appropriate for us to go ahead and file the quiet title action and make sure that we have clear title before we authorize someone else to build on this particular land. Since this staff report was filed, I've been informed that those developers who were interested in developing this property have at least attempted to purchase or have an offer to purchase some other property, and they may not be interested in moving forward on this property for another two or three years. That would allow then that two-year period of time to lapse, and any quiet title action that was filed at that time would probably be easier and more quickly accomplished than the one would be now. Today, Linda Wildman is here and can speak to those other folks who are interested or were interested at one point in developing this land, if you would like to hear that.
Let me just ask you, Marilyn, if I may, what is on the property now? What structure is on the property?
As I understand it, there is a house, and there's something that looks like a garage. They were not built at the same time. I understand the garage is much more recent than the house.
And this is on the property where Riverside makes the turn onto Booth Street?
Linda?
It's right, it-
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought it was. I have not visited the property site.
It's where we approved a condominium so many years ago, project at the end of the street there.
That's correct. And that's why you see all of the APN numbers, because those are condo numbers, and that's what we were reverting back to acreage, and that's when the title company was, was concerned about the two-year additional period.
Well, I know there's some discussion about the property being historical and being brought back, and the money to do that would be just, I, I, I'm the first one to protect historical buildings, but it'd just be enormous. So when you talk about it being converted for affordable housing, I, I just don't see how that could happen. I, I assume you're talking not about that building, raising that building and doing something in that area?
That I don't know. I have not spoken to the developers. Maureen McKissick is not here today. She is the one who's in contact. But whatever that was, those folks are not, probably not currently interested unless that their current purchase falls through in moving forward in the next, in the next two or three years. So it's possible that we could continue this for, say, six months or a year or something like that, or even the two-year period, and that would make the quiet title action a much easier action to accomplish. But we did, we did start this process of bringing it to you, so we wanted to finish that.
So that, that's your recommendation? You want us to continue this for a period of time?
I'm thinking that that's a wiser way to go, is to, to give us a, at least another six months and take a look at it again to see if there's, if there's any benefit in proceeding with a quiet title action at the, at that time, as opposed to not letting the two years just lapse.
I'll listen to anybody else's. I, I have no problem with that, because I can tell you the structure you're talking about. I mean, besides my house, it's a money pit. It's the second biggest money pit in, in the city, so I, I would certainly say that we continue this to a period of time till we can find out, and then go with the quick claim deed. That's what I would move to do.
I'm sorry, you have two of those.
Two what? Money pits?
Money pits.
Yeah, I know. Thank you. Thank you for reminding us.
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
Marilyn, if you were able to find the property owner, would the title company take a waiver of the redemption, two-year redemption period in order to issue the title insurance as opposed to a quiet title action? Because you still have to, don't you have to find the person anyway?
We, well, we send out notices to the last owner, whether we actually find him or not, as you know.
Right.
It's, it's a matter of publication, that we would go through that process, and then if they come forward in the court action, then there would be that, that, that issue of, was, was the transfer to the city via the tax deed in error in some fashion? I mean, we've gone past there a time to just pay the back taxes and take the property back that way, but we still have this additional period. I can talk to the title company and see what they would be willing to do. My information that I received from another staff member from the city who actually talked to them did not suggest that they were willing to do anything.
Other than a quiet title action?
Other, well, that was, that was their thought of how to proceed.
Right. Yeah, I'd be interested to know if, if they were, if you were able to locate that person, whether they would accept some kind of a waiver or conveyance where he basically waives his two-year right of redemption.
Of course, as you know, you know, title, quiet title actions can raise all sorts of issues, as we discovered in Military Road, and they can become rather complex. And so Maureen McKissick asked me, she said, well, how long would this take? Because at that point, she was under the impression that at least one or perhaps two developers were interested in affordable housing.
No, I understand.
And I said, you know, probably six to eight months, because those are just the kind of timelines, even if everything moves well without a glitch. So she said, well, I don't know that that would work for these folks.
Okay. Well, I was just curious to see if you could short-circuit the, if you find them, get, if that would get you, you'd resolve the issue, and then you'd get your title insurance right away.
I can sure give it a try.
Okay.
Ms. Fraser.
Yeah, a couple of questions, Marilyn. Is it too late to pay the back taxes on this? I mean, can we petition the county commission and pay the back tax? Because that way we don't have to designate it for a public purpose.
I asked Lori Miles if she would make contact with the treasurer's office and inquire of that question, and we did not talk about petitioning the county commissioners. The treasurer's office answered no, that it was too late, that they would not do that.
Okay, and, I mean, who could, because this, according to the staff report, this went to the county for their approval. I mean, is that something that we could ask the commission to do?
Well, I suppose one can always ask.
I mean, why would they turn down taxes?
Well, I, I think that they have a set of rules. I did not inquire with them. That was simply the answer to the question that was put to them by Ms. Miles, property, our property manager.
And then Marilyn, on this, if we, if we did pay the back taxes, if we were able to do that, will we still have the issue with this two-year process, as Councilman Hashcheff brought up, as far as resolving the, the title?
I would imagine that the title company would still be rather hesitant, because we would have paid the taxes rather than they have paid the taxes. And if they're going to find fault with the procedure that was used in order to transfer it to the city, I would think that would still give some concern to the title company. Again, I'm uncomfortable speaking for them, but I would think that they would be reticent.
So why would we hold off on this, then? Why won't we move forward and, and try and resolve the title issues?
Simply because when the two-year passes, that's a statute of limitations for people to come forward and say that there has been an error in the process. And it eliminates at least some of the issues that can arise in, in the, in the lawsuit.
But essentially, we can't do anything with the structure on that site for two years until this is resolved?
Oh, I'm not saying that we can't do something with the structure. I'm saying that if we're going to allow someone to build affordable, try to either transfer to someone or allow someone to build affordable housing on city property, and we don't have clear title, or find it close to the end of two years that we don't have clear title, that's probably not the wisest way to proceed, when we allow someone else to make investments on the property.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Somebody give me a motion? Mr. Hashcheff? Or Mr. Guston, it's your turn, or-
So, just one question, you, you'd prefer that we continue this for a period of time?
I think that that's wise, to continue it for, say, six months and take another look at it at that time. And if for some reason that we need to bring it back to you more quickly, we will do that, if there's something that comes up.
You know, I, I'd support that, because I know the condition of the building, and we don't want to, I, I don't think we want to own it right now as, and make it for a public use. I, the funds to do that would be enormous. So I'm going to move that we continue this agenda item for a six-month period of time.
Have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Adam J. Six.
Good afternoon, Kevin Knudsen from the city manager's office. We came to you in September and October with some discussion about the public-private partnership policy that we have, or competition policy, excuse me, public-private competition policy, specifically pointing out some areas that caused staff some concern. In specific, that the way we did the scoping was based on the current service level, and we wanted the flexibility to be able to make changes to the current service level in the scope, so that we could improve the process as we were bidding. Number two, the old policy guaranteed employment for any employees that were displaced as a result of, of managed competition, and we don't believe we're able to do that any longer and ask for that change. And then we wanted more rigorous monitoring of contracts. All three of those changes have been made to the policy. It's before you today for adoption. If you are willing to move forward with that, on a separate track, we have also been very aggressively moving forward with our managed competition program that this would apply to. The city manager has given direction to staff to pick some projects and move forward. Currently, in the next couple of weeks, we'll be going out to bid on janitorial services that include all of the parks and aquatics bathroom facilities. And we're also going to be looking at our payroll system, our sewer billing system, and our fleet maintenance over the next few months. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any question? Have a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Adam J. Seven, Deppha Bank.
Good afternoon, Robert Chisel, Finance Director for the city of Reno. The agreement before you today includes the option to sell the land under the Fitzgerald's parking garage for $2.5 million and restructure the two outstanding bonds, the 2006 taxable lease revenue bond and the 2007 Fitzgerald taxable revenue bond, both held by Deppha Bank. The proposed agreement will allow the city to sell the land to the Comro developer. Comro will have two years to buy the land underneath the structure for the $2.5 million price, and is providing an option payment of $165,000 each of, for the, each of the next two years. No additional revenue or collateral is being offered as part of this deal with Deppha Bank. Only the revenue that was pledged before will be pledged after the sale, and the refinanced bond will continue to be a variable rate bond. I would like to note one little change in the escrow agreement. The staff is requesting the city council direct agreement be amended to allow for an escrow agreement in lieu of a letter of credit, and authorize the city manager or is designated to negotiate and execute said escrow agreement on behalf of the city.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions? Motion?
I've got some questions.
Ms. Fraser.
Yeah, um, Robert, on the, on the page 149, actually, page two of the staff report, the, it talks about the refunding of bonds will require the city to increase levy, lease revenues to main one, maintain one times coverage. If we can't maintain that one times coverage and we don't have the reserves in place, what's our obligation there? Would that then come from the general fund?
No, all we are pledging is the lease revenue, so we have to make a good faith effort to lease the property-
Make that at one times.
And fill, yeah, and the one times coverage is based on 4.97% LIBOR rate. Right now, LIBOR is under 1%, it's about .65. There is a risk, but right now we have that same risk. If we do not have the lease to pay our bonds, the same thing would happen after we restructure.
Okay, and then, right now, are both bonds on a variable rate, or?
Yes.
Okay, so-
They're both variable tied to LIBOR.
Okay, so we're not taking a fixed rate and, and tying it into that variable rate?
No.
And then on the other question that came up, actually, Councilman Hashcheff had asked this at the last meeting, under the non-disparagement clause. What, what does that mean? I mean, because I have a problem with this whole agreement if, you know, I should be able to, as an elected official, say whatever I want about the bank. I feel that's my right. Did we get this struck out of the agreement?
Well, the disparagement clause refers only to staff, not to council, and Legal probably could give a better explanation what that means. That means I am not going to come up here and disparage Deppha Bank. It is not restricting the councils or the mayor's ability to speak as they feel appropriate.
Yeah, I would like to hear that from Legal.
For the record, Jonathan Shipman. Yeah, as Mr. Chisel indicated, the disparagement clause only applies to city staff and does not apply to city council.
Okay, and then one other question, Jonathan. On the last one, Councilman Hashcheff had brought up the, the notification of putting it on the council agenda for, I, I just want to go through that in the public meeting, what we're actually committing to there.
Sure. What we're committing to is, is exactly what has been committed to in the prior two bond agreements, which is, in the event of a default, you know, payment default, or in the event that the reserves have to be used, the city finance director is required to bring what's known as a replenishment resolution to the city council and make the request and act in good faith to try to get the council to appropriate money to fund the reserve. At that point, it's within the purview of the council to fund or to not fund. And so it's, it's exactly the same deal that we have currently in place.
So that, I just want on the public record that the general, there's no obligation by the general fund to cover this debt obligation in any such way, no implied such way? There's no general fund obligation to this particular-
There is no general fund obligation. This is a revenue bond, and the general fund is not implicated, period.
And there's no implication implied-
Correct.
By, by that particular clause?
Correct.
Okay. Just comments, Mr. Mayor.
Have a motion? Have a motion? Second. All in favor say aye.
Do you have comments, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, excuse me.
Just comments, Mr. Mayor, if I could. In last meeting, I did bring up a, a whole series of issues that I have with this particular bond structure. Since that period of time, staff has given us a memo about the legal ramifications by not moving forward with these particular bond issues and the lawsuits that, that could potentially arise out of that. I'm going to go ahead and support this. I'm not happy about this agreement, though. I think that was expressed last meeting. I think the $300,000 that we have to pay and the fact that the bank is not reducing the amount of the obligation, I think is in, in poor taste, especially since the city has acted in good faith on the sales of the waste management property, and we're current on all our, our lease revenue payments on that particular bonds. But I think in the best interests of the city and to protect the city from litigation, I'm going to go ahead and support tying the two together.
Okay. Ms. Hashcheff.
No, I, I just want to just confirm what staff indicated. That's also my understanding, it's just the best efforts clause, but council retains the right, as they always do, to make the final decision, whether that be to, to, to deny the requests made by staff.
Any others? Have a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. And Mr. Liao, thank you all for doing what you've done. Comro's looking great. K. One, appointments. Ward one.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. You know where that is, on Riverside Drive area.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'd like to appoint Genevieve Martinez to the Neighborhood Advisory Board.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Financial Advisory Board.
I just wanted to hear from staff, did you know if, it wasn't clear to me that the Financial Advisory Board accepted this person? Because we continued it last time.
I'm sorry, I haven't heard anything.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we continue this? I want to make sure that the Financial Advisory Board actually interviewed Mr. Anderson.
Okay. Have a motion to continue. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries. Identification of future agenda items.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I need one on the agenda for direction to staff to, to change the assignments on the park agreements and the, I'm sorry, fire station agreement from Syntex over to Corona LLC. And I have the documentation here. I'm not sure how to, to word it exactly, so I've let legal staff come up with that. I don't want any changes to what was existing under the- I don't want any changes to what was existing under the Syntex agreement. This is just the transfer because they're the new owners of the property, so they've been working on this for like, three years. But I just want to be clear for staff that it's not a reduction in their impact fees or changes in the park. It's the exact agreement that they have currently with Syntex to come to council.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. Just so council is aware, the city manager, staff, and legal have been negotiating with Corona Cyan, who has purchased the property from Syntex. Syntex is still the master developer on that, and there are deadlines that haven't been complied with, so there do need to be changes to the agreement. So we would come back to you with a presentation, and you could see what's going on, is the recommendation, so then you can make a decision based upon full information.
Okay, yeah, I mean, if we could get that information and presentation so we can give direction at our next meeting, any information that you have would be helpful.
And make sure we don't drop any obligations that Syntex had agreed to.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to put on the Health Department again. I mean, I asked for this over a month ago, and the director, I guess, chose not to show up, but we haven't had, it's not even on our November calendar to get an update from the Health Department on REMSA. And so, I think it's a broader issue, we're going to have some discussion today, but I think we need to bring up at a council to talk about what we do with our interlocal agreement regarding the Health Department, because we're running into some time problems, which I've been stating for months, and it just never has gotten on the agenda.
Okay.
Well, Dave, I mean, if you want, there's a meeting tomorrow, and Joe Isner, who is the Health Director's, Health Department Officer, said he'd come any time, but I think there's been some miscommunication about what you want him to bring. You said a general discussion about REMSA. What does that mean?
Well, for one thing, we've missed the deadline now because of that, for doing something. So it got me wondering who's got the hooks into who, why he wouldn't just come to us or call me and ask me what I wanted. I mean, I think that this whole thing is being orchestrated so they don't have to come and talk to the public.
I don't agree with you. I don't agree with that it is being, but when you say you missed the deadline to do what?
To, to tell the other entities that we want to make changes to the, to the Health Department.
You want to make changes to the Health Department?
We can't now, for another year. And I brought this up a year ago, and this continually gets postponed and postponed by someone, so the council can never take action on this. And I believe that this Health Department issue with REMSA has to be brought out so people understand it, because we don't know. All I, and that's what I wanted, and I made it very clear, and he was in the audience. I want to know about the Health Department and how REMSA deals with it, and how it happens that they have a contract that cannot be changed in any way, shape, or form. That's what the public believes.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Caden Smatievich with the City Manager's Office. I understand that Dr. Isner has confirmed that he will attend the November 16 council meeting. He confirmed that with Mr. Klinger's administrative assistant this morning.
And now, it's too late to do anything, correct? Under our current contract?
I believe, yeah, it depends upon what you're saying, anything. There are some provisions that would have, well, yeah, no, not even to the 15-day timeline. We wouldn't meet that either, so no.
Anyway, we'll bring that back, maybe sometime in November, if he chooses to meet with us. The other one is, I would like to have some conversation about the RTC City Center site. I don't know if we're going to call it that. I actually had some conversations yesterday with some of the deans from the School of Art at UNR, and they're interested in maybe opening up one of those as a place where they can do some artwork, and students would volunteer to go in there and keep it open. So what would we have to do to get, to get those buildings opened? What hoops would someone have to jump through to do that leasing, or what we'd have to do? If it's intergovernmental, maybe we didn't have to do something like that. So they asked me to bring it forward to see what it is that we'd have to do.
That'd be great. Also, looking at our SAVE officers or anything else that might be able to be in that area. Okay, any others?
On the, the management agreement on the ballroom facility, that was supposed to come back to us some time ago. There were some management fees and some other things that were presented when they gave their budget presentation, and that hasn't come back. And then, my other question, and I don't know if it's for Legal to come back, I'd like to have a legal opinion on whether we can use, and I'd asked this a few months back, the $2 room charge. Right now, we have the reserve that's, that's from the general fund in the CIP reserve for the ballroom facility and an event center facility. I want to find out if that could be freed up and put in the general fund, and the $2 charge replenished, replenishes that reserve, because that's hitting the general fund another $3 million this year, and going to continue to rise under staff's debt projections.
Okay. Yes, Mr. President?
I'd like on our November 9th agenda to have a discussion on the local agreement with the government department. We don't have that anywhere for that, just so we can discuss amongst ourselves what locations are.
Adam L. Ford's been pulled. L. Five, motion? Ms. President? All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Adam L. Six, ward redistricting. Mr. Isner? Wait a minute, what is this? Oh, excuse me. Excuse me, one minute. L. Two and L. Three, reports on any conference medians?
Quick update on RTC, Mr. Mayor. I think we might need Legal to look at this one, too. They had a meeting last Friday, and they, they voted to, I'm not quite sure how they did this, but take, to take away the $6 million that they'd offered us before. I had a conversation with RTC's attorney later on, but I think our attorney has to look into it. In my mind, they offered us $6 million, and a month later, they rescind the offer. I think once an offer for, for property's been made, that it's got to stay out there for a little while. Even the way they went about it, I think, defied Robert's Rules of Order, so it might have even been an improper motion. But we'll have to maybe bring that back on our next agenda, as an agenda item, and decide what we want to do with, with that offer, because I'm not really sure where it is right now. They just said, no. So that's the end.
Good.
And if I may, Dave, just to chime in on the, the $6 million offer was to the city for use as they saw fit, to do what they wanted to do, and there were other commissioners that were uncomfortable with that. And as far as I'm concerned, it comes down to, you need to, to make an agreement, you need two parties. You need a willing seller and a willing buyer. And right now, I don't think we are, we have either of those in line, so, like Dave said, I don't know where it's going to go from here, but we'll go down that road. But we were a willing seller at $6 million. We, because that was taken off the table, we're no longer a willing seller.
Okay, if y'all keep us posted on that, we'd appreciate it. Any liaison reports? We'll have a League of Cities report at our next meeting. Okay, now we're to Adam. Let's get L. Seven out of the way real quick. Is that, no, it's not going to be. So we might as well go to L. Six. Mr. Feimster.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, I'm Lonnie Feimster with Reno Sparks NAACP, and I'm here to address a couple of issues. I'd first of all like to thank Councilman Isner for giving me the maps and the proposals for the changes in the city council seats, and spending a little time explaining them to me. I was a little concerned, because I had to go out of town, back east, and part of it was to look at some redistricting concepts that are similar to what we're proposing here and the impacts it had on the communities. Apparently, this is a trend that is causing a lot of grief in a lot of communities because of the feeling that there is a unfair influence of suburban and urban balance of power. And from what I see on the maps, and I've got to look at these, and I would have a question as to whether the maps are online, because you've got to balance populations if you make recommendations and say, well, could you move that line over? That would make things a lot less of a problem. And I'm also concerned with the process of, because in working with Sparks, Washoe County, and the School District, I've met, along with Immigration Coalition and Members of Plan, with the map drawers and the liaison to the government entities, and it required quite a bit of time to work out something that seemed reasonable. And of course, it's not everything you say gets accepted, but it made people feel better that they had some input. There's a couple of issues, because I missed the meeting. I had made several emails to the city and all the government entities, that the NAACP wanted to be very involved with the process. We didn't hear any response from City of Reno, so I called and was told Lynette Jones would be the key person, would mail out information. I got the email on the meeting on last Wednesday, and fortunately, the Immigration Coalition had their meeting. I had to go to Virginia and back east, and we missed the meeting. I didn't know there was going to be a follow-up meeting to that. I did not get a notice. Apparently, someone, I mean, the city clerk did realize the NAACP wanted to be notified, so she sent the first meeting. I didn't get the second one, so I don't know who was at the meeting, was there any ethnic minority involvement? This is an important part of the process, I think, because of what's happened in the past. And I don't know what other kind of outreach is, it's just being posted, and I called some of the groups to find out if they got any notice. Is the committee expecting the NAACP to notice, notify all people of color, or do they all have to just go look and find out what any meetings? I don't know what happened with the meeting Monday. If I'm correct, it was a follow-up meeting Monday, I would have liked to have been there, but I don't know what kind of attendance or whatever was there, but I will look at these maps and make some suggestions. I don't know if I'm expecting too much out of the City of Reno. We got, I think, extremely helpful participation by staff in Sparks, Washoe County, and the School District. The School District hasn't finalized their maps, and I would like to know, is there going to be another meeting? And also, in the process of working with these other government entities, we had to work very closely with the staff and the liaison to the entity to come up with, with even a recommendation. This is a very complicated process. I have a whole room. I used to have a pool table. It's now covered with a gigantic piece of cardboard and maps all over the place, overlays of income, housing costs, ethnicities, voting. I know you're not concerned with voting, but it's very important that groups are aware of, does partisanship enter into the process? Who's drawing the map and who's the liaison? I mean, that's bringing back information to the map drawers. So I would have those questions for council, if they could address, is there going to be another meeting? Is there any opportunity for the Immigration Coalition, Progressive Leadership Alliance representatives, as well as myself and whoever else from the NAACP wants to participate, to make some recommendations based on what I've been able to see, and are these maps online? I hope that's not too many questions in a row.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
If you want, Mr. Mayor, I'll take you through what we discussed a little bit. We did have a meeting on last Wednesday, and then we continued that until Monday, so that we could have those two meetings. We had one public speaker on Wednesday, and no one showed up on Monday. And we only presented three options, and the board yesterday, I mean, on Monday, voted to bring forward these two, Option A and Option B, I believe, right, Sharon? With Option B being the preference of the subcommittee, which was, just Sharon and I were there at the time. So it's all up for debate, but I'll take you through real quickly. There wasn't any staff members that did this. This is what I did at home, so it wasn't a whole lot of staff time on this, I'll admit that right now. The first map you see here is our current ward boundaries, and it shows the full extent of the city. That's they are now. The second one just has the charts on them, and we'll get to that in a minute. So let's go to the third one. So then, what I did, I zoomed in on just the sections that we can change. You know, the rules are, they have to be contiguous and all those, so we really can't deal with the outer issues very much, in any event. So this is the area that I focused in on, and those black dots are where the current council members live, so it's also required that we cannot move them out of their current district. So that's where it is right now, and that's on one of your maps, also, on your first page. You can turn that over. Then we went to Option A, and I'll show you what the map looks like. And up in the, in the north part, this is the same in all of them, up in here. This doesn't change through all three options. For the audience that's over here.
Dave, let's clarify, the blue that you see up there is really green?
No. That's blue.
No, blue would be Ward Two.
So what happens, the way I did the colors was, in the original map, if you were light green, what you're going to take now would be dark green. If it was pink, it would get to be red. So what happens up there is, in that particular precinct, that's one precinct up there, that would go from Councilman Sfraz's Ward to Councilman Dorch's Ward. He would take that over. Down here, the opposite happens. It goes from Councilman Dorch's Ward to Councilwoman Sfraz's Ward in that area. And all these, go ahead.
The confusion is, the blue for the south?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes, I'm sorry. The blue for the north is different than the blue for the south. I see what you're saying, yeah. It just shows up a little, actually, on this one, it shows up different, but on your map that's printed out, it looks the same, but here, this looks sort of turquoise. And all the green would go from Councilman Dorch's Ward to my ward, Ward Five. In fact, this area was in my ward last time, in that area. So that's the same on all three of the districts. And if you'll see, down here, that's on your very back page, I've got the same chart. It shows how each one has to get bigger and smaller and what I had to deal with. So I have this page here on the back of all of them, that shows all three options with the precinct number and how many people are in the precincts and how that modified it. And then, on yellow on the left, it shows you how much difference we would have with these options. Like Option A, we have a 4.06% population difference. Option B would be 4.89, and Option C is 3.52, and we're required to be within 5%. So this was Option A. Oh, I didn't go down here. Down in this area now, this is the Park Lane area, this is Plum Lane that goes this way, this is 395 that goes down this way, and this is Kitsky that goes down the middle. So what that would do is, that would bring, this ward here, this precinct here would go into Councilwoman Sfraz's district, and these two here, from Kitsky Lane to Virginia, would go into Councilwoman Guston's Ward, would go to Ward One. So he would cross Virginia Street right here, we'd check with the city attorney, that's legal, that's still considered contiguous, and he would take that over there. The reason we can't logically just go down this way is, right here, now it's a yellow dot, but that's where Councilwoman Zadra lives, so that makes a lot of change, what we can do. Since he took too much of the population here, Councilwoman Zadra would take over some of this Ward One area down here, which is east of Skyline. This is Skyline Boulevard right here. This is the Washoe Golf Course. Also, in all three of these maps, this area in the southeast would go from Councilwoman Zadra's, Councilwoman Sfraz's Ward to Councilwoman Zadra's Ward. This is only a population here of less than 700 people, and we thought it'd be better to keep this sort of in one ward, this whole district here. There's sort of, the geography out there, this is the same sort of neighborhood. The one public comment we had on Wednesday, he was saying we should keep, try to keep neighborhoods together. So that's, that's also the same in all three options. So then, Option B, which was the preference of Sharon and I, it only made two minor changes. This precinct right here would also go from Councilwoman Zadra to Councilwoman Guston's Ward, and that makes it look a little bit better than that little point going across there for continuity. And, and to make up for that, Councilwoman Zadra would go further up the west side of Washoe Golf Course up to Plum Lane, which actually is closer to her house right here. Golf Course up to Plum Lane, which actually is closer to her house right here. So it sort of just keeps that around. So the basic effect is, some of these wards, it's actually what Mr. Feimster's talking about, by nature of math, they're moving out of the central core, and the other people are moving more into the core. So you have, you can see right here, if you consider inside McCarran Loop, the core, you've got Dan Guston doing this entire area here. I've got the entire northwest here, and Councilwoman Sfraz will have everything on the east side of Reno for the most part. So it gets it down to where we used to have all five wards going into there. Now it's cut down to three, just because of we've grown north and south. And it was really...
It does what Lonny's talking about. It keeps three within the core, essentially.
Correct. Correct. It keeps Ward Three within the core.
And the other thing that it does, for Mr. Feimster's benefit, the very topic that you brought up is the one that I brought up at both of the meetings, is the ethnic populations within each of the wards currently, and this redistributes a great deal of that, that area, if you want to show the laser again, Dave, that will become the purple and coralish colors, right? That has all been in Ward Two, having it have the highest, very high concentration, particularly Hispanic. And Ward One virtually had nil. I mean, not none, but in comparison, hardly any. By now redistributing, we've got those populations represented in every ward at a far better percentage than we had previously.
I think I have a slide that will show that later on. But the only data, just so everyone knows, that we had, that I had to draw these, that I got from the university, is just ward-wide districts on ethnicity and race. And so by breaking down precincts, I couldn't see how that changed anything. All I have is the current ward right now. What you're referring to, Councilwoman, is Ward One now has 10% of the Hispanic or Latino as of right this second, while Ward Three has 41.4%. And I think you're right. It's just based on what we know about the city. That's a large population there, that that will shift over into Ward One and more even that out.
Right.
In what that's going. Okay, Option C, the northern part stays the same, the southern part stays the same. What changes is, instead of Councilman Guston moving down here around the Park Lane Mall area, he would just move across Virginia Street over into Wells Avenue and take this entire area here. Now, that's a huge population, but he would take that, and Councilwoman Sfraz would then take this area over here. This is just way too much for her to take also. It'd be a nice, neat little line if she could do that, but it couldn't. In exchange for taking all of this, Councilman Guston would also have to take, move over into here and take this over from Councilwoman Zadra to make that. This is the least favored of the people I've talked to, because mainly, this is a neighborhood. We all think, I think we all believe that South Virginia sort of divides neighborhoods, and there's a division in Wells Avenue. On both sides of Wells Avenue, they work together very well. So them staying as a neighborhood cohesive unit would probably make a lot of sense to keep that. So those were the three options. And what else did I have up there? What's the, oh, this is the, is there one more? I forget. I'll keep going. These are just the bigger issues. One more, I think it is. Here's the one chart I got from the university that shows the race and ethnicity. So you see, it's not broken down by precincts. So by making these changes, I have no idea how that really changes on this chart. I don't have that to work for. But also, for the public, I'll go down again, that we're all elected citywide. So we all actually, at the end of the day, represent 100% of all races and ethnicities in the city. We all represent them because we all get voted in citywide, which is probably why we don't have as many problems as the county commission does. We're also nonpartisan. We didn't look at who's Republican and who's Democrat and who's nonpartisan, and all that stuff sort of gets to go away with the city council. So those were the options, and the committee brought forward Option B as the preferable method. And I believe this still needs, if we voted on it today, would still need another hearing. So if the public did have questions or problems, they could sure bring them up. And the last thing I'd like to say to Mr. Feimster, I got this map from the county that has, and it's hard to read this way, but I can zoom in on it, so it showed me all of the precincts with the population in it. I didn't get a spreadsheet. I just sort of did it all on my own, and anyone can do that. So that's what we have.
And I think...
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, and Lonny did bring up another issue, making sure there was ward with, where we had tremendous diversity. If you look at Ward Three, I'm a minority in my own ward. So I think that goes to the objectives of what he's truly looking for. And to go back, that is under Option B. I mean, that's how it currently exists now in Ward Three. You have 44.5% are whites in Ward Three, if you look at the demographics. But if we go with Option B, it does, what it does do, if you look at the wards, it would make Ward One more diverse. And by doing Option B, which it looks like, and Dave, I'm not sure on yours for Ward Five, but if you look at those numbers that you got from the university, I think that helps bridge those gaps tremendously. And there's only so much we can do, because you can't district out a councilperson out of their ward, number one. But number two, you have to stay contiguous. Option C, I do not like because the Wells Avenue, we would be splitting up the plan. And nothing against you, Councilman Guston, because it doesn't affect myself in Ward Three, because as of next year, I won't be serving as a Ward Three representative. But what it does, it would split up the plan that we worked so hard to adopt. On Option C, it essentially split up that neighborhood and the representation. So that's the only issue I would have with Option C. But I'm comfortable with either A or B.
Well, regarding Option C, one of the things that, when I looked at this, and I'm sorry, I wasn't at a meeting, I didn't get a trip to Virginia, but I probably was in Sparks when I was supposed to be attending that, but I wasn't there. I'm sorry. But somewhat along the same lines, when we looked at downtown, and we formed a conservation district over in the Pounding addition, we looked at historic resources, et cetera, the plan went from Wells Avenue to Keystone and from the freeway down to the river. So I thought, well, you know, that included in that with, there are some historic resources in that triangle area we're looking at. That made some sense to me. Not that the other one in B with the lower part of that area doesn't make sense also. But I also respect that what the councilperson in an area has done as a very strong advocate for Wells Avenue and brought it to our attention. I think you have done a very fine job there. So it doesn't affect my ego one way or the other. I would, my preference would be to take that, but I understand what you have done. I understand there's a year to go, and we both might not be here, who knows? But I certainly have no problem with that because of what's happened there. And I had some conversation with people who are in the forefront of historic resources in that area. In fact, I want to bring one of the primary ladies on our Historic Resources Commission, and I don't know if she's there yet. But I can go along with this, and I, Dave and Sharon, I think you did a marvelous job in sorting this out, because it's no easy thing. There are a lot of pieces and moving parts to make fit. So I certainly could, with Option B, understand Sharon's difficulty around Skyline. It's always been in Ward One and around that area, but to balance the numbers makes sense to me. So I really don't have a problem with Option B, and that would be my preference. I'm sorry, Dwight, excuse me.
Yeah. Dave, what, how did the final numbers end up in Option B?
In Option B, if you look at the back sheet here, Dwight...
Is it the bottom numbers on this?
We have the three. The bottom numbers is what they would be at. Let's see, would that be, no, that's how much they changed. All I have on here is, yes, the very bottom numbers, 44784 for Ward One, 43457 for Ward Two, 43852 for Ward Three, 45582 for Ward Four, and 45006 for Ward Five.
So Ward Two would be the smallest ward, Four the largest, right?
Correct.
And then what's that difference? What's that percentage difference?
The difference, that's over on the left, it's 4.89%.
Okay.
It's very close. And if I could find one between you two that's only 1,000 people, it would have been, made sense, but those precincts are very heavy up there, so it's hard just to find one that's has a few number of people, or usually like 2,000. So just tip it the other way.
Because one of the things I, someone, I don't remember who told me, is we actually don't have, we're not, we don't, we're not required to wait for a census, that we're actually supposed, we're supposed to redistrict anytime we get beyond 5%?
And we did that, I think, four or five years ago.
Right.
We're not required to, but we did.
No, I think we're required to.
If we know it's over 5%.
If we know it's over 5%, we're required to. And that just worries me a little bit at how close that 4.89 is. And we see some minor change, and we're going to be right back at this again. As far as what you've got, I'm comfortable with. If there's any way we can try to manipulate it a little more, and I guess you already looked at that, though. But, I mean, just some minor changes in either of those wards, and, I mean, we're going to be right back at this again.
I'll try to find where I was looking at. The biggest change I could see would be Ward 4006, I think it is. Can you go back to one of the maps? Anyway, right there. This one right here, Dwight? See, that could easily shift from you to, from four to three, but that doesn't help you get from four to two. That's our differences between Ward Four and Ward Two, I think.
Right.
On that one. So how do I switch from here to here? Everyone would have to rotate again. Only 1,000 people.
Right.
So I have to find 1,000 that's contiguous in every precinct and go all the way around there.
How many are in that spot?
Pardon me?
How many are in that one?
This one right here?
Yeah.
Uh, 2,434.
Yeah, so that just doesn't do it.
Because that would throw too many over into either Ward Five or Ward Three. There'd be too many there.
Right.
So what might happen the next time, if you go over the limit, maybe it'll be Ward Three that would then drop down lower, and that would be a nice, you know, this one might be the one that changes again, right here. One of these two will probably change between you and Ward Five and Ward Three, and your ward will probably always be changing back and forth.
Okay.
Any other question?
Just one more. So the process, so we would go out with our preferable plan, and then we would get public input on that plan. And then, I mean, because we have to have two readings, right? And it's got to be five-sevenths of the council. So just procedurally, if we pick what the subcommittee's recommendation is, then we would have two more hearings essentially at the council meeting.
Yeah, and the subcommittee's recommendation is Option B?
Right.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I guess for legal.
Section 1.050 of the charter says, "The boundaries of the wards must be established and changed by ordinance passed by a vote of at least five-sevenths of the city council." So you would have two readings on the ordinance.
So we could have two more hearings if we went forward with whatever option today for staff to come back and prepare the ordinance, and we would have two more, two more...
Two more bites of the apple, to put it...
And then my second question is, when does this actually take effect? Once council adopts? Is it next election? Or would it be, because I thought last time when we adopted it, it became effective immediately, essentially after the second reading.
Well, it'll become effective immediately because it would be important, considering the fact that in March, you're going to have filing for...
Okay.
...three wards and the at-large ward. The at-large isn't as important, but the three wards that are up for reelection next time for election. So you're going to want to get, and the voter registrar is going to want to have it as rapidly as possible as well, because they're going to have to adjust their boundaries and so forth. But it would be important for people who are going to file for election to know that they somehow, by changing the ordinance, or changing the precincts, they're suddenly no longer in the precinct they thought they were going to run in, they might be in a precinct which is not up, or, excuse me, a ward that's not up for election.
So, yeah, so in fairness, we should probably be getting this done as quickly as we can.
Okay, somebody want to make a, do we have a motion to accept?
I just have one quick comment, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Feimster's point, to make this as all-inclusive as possible. Can staff maybe meet with Mr. Feimster? I know he'll get the word out, because obviously, I'd like to have input before we go to final adoption of this, of the redistricting, so to make sure everybody on his list gets notified, and anybody else that may want to have input before the council makes the final decision.
And then we, the map, can we put the option online, too? I mean, on the city's website, we should, and comments for anyone, and probably blow that up and put that out.
One more thing I think we should do is, we should have staff check my math. Don't assume it's all right.
Gigo, yeah, okay. All right, I think we've got the, let's only make a motion to recommend the Option B.
Move that we recommend Option B, and that staff will verify the numbers as they're reflected, and that the options will be posted online, and information provided to anyone who would like additional direction or discussion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I would like to congratulate the subcommittee for doing good work on this. Thank you very much for your hard work.
Dave did.
Can I ask Ms. Councilman Azzie one question?
Come up here, make it brief, please, and come up here, Mr. Feimster.
Yes, Lonny, Lonny Feimster, again. Councilman Azzie, having worked on this with three different government entities, now four, there is something that has been problematic I know you ran into. There are three council people that are going to be termed out, right? Should these lines be beholden to their home location when we don't know where the next candidate will live?
It's the state law, Lonny. You can't...
No, I'm saying, you're not, you're not drawing these lines for the current city council, you're drawing them for the next election.
But you can't...
It's both ways.
Okay, well, that's the question.
That's why I think what the question was, when does it take effect? And it takes effect immediately. So that's why we have to stay in the ward bounds.
Correct. You know, you're not, you can't run again. Your house right now affects...
Because I still have to live in my ward by law, so if I could put myself out of my ward, then I'd be out of office earlier than...
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, that, on our agenda, we would move to L7. The discussion of potential direction of city liaison, which would be me, to the Washoe County District Health Board and/or staff regarding future board discussion and possible amendments to waste collection and transportation regulations for possible action. What that means is, a brief overview, if I may, as being the representative from the city council on the health board, is the health board has been tasked with, the department has been tasked with the last 15 to 17 months to come up with some regulations on the definition of garbage and hauling and recycling, et cetera, et cetera. And they have come back in our meeting tomorrow with Agenda Item 14 and 50 with some recommendations. And by way of disclosure, I spoke to both parties, both sides briefly, spoke to Mr. Reeser, representing Castaways, and Mr. Duhon, representing Waste Management, about the agenda item for the health board tomorrow. And either of you may speak at any time, if you ever raise your hand, I'll recognize you. But one of the discussions we had before this item was continued was, there was some concern and acceptance of the definition of garbage. And now we have gotten to, both sides, I agree, and you might not have had, both agree with the definition the health board has of garbage. Is that correct? Both sides agree to that? Okay. But the, where it gets more complicated, if I may, is on the permitting for trash hauling. And if you look at, in my humble one person's opinion on this, where the problem comes about is in the proposed section 050.108, where it talks about solid waste, and it gives a def... the proposed section 050.108, where it talks about solid waste, and it gives a def, definition. I think it's as simple as, but I'm a simple person, as changing one word in this. And I, I would talk to the Health Department yesterday, and the District Attorney's Office, the attorney that, that sits at our board meetings, was rewriting some information, and what I got back was, it was as, as simple as, in that opening line of, again, 050.018, is changing one word to say, instead of solid waste including garbage that is collected and transported, et cetera, et cetera, to get to the, the changing of the word, solid waste excluding garbage that is collected and transported by permitted waste, so on and so forth. And that's where I thought we had come down to, and Mr. Shipman, would you like care to opine on anything else, anything different at this point? Okay. So I do have, I do have a couple, I'm just taking these away, I, I got them request to speak, Mr. Dan Reeser.
So that change is being made?
I, I...
Or is that something you're proposing at, at the health board tomorrow?
I think, depending on what council tells me today, and what, what happens here, that, to me, that's a very, very simple solution that avoids a lot of other complications, which I will get into, and I will list if, uh, the, the, the city council wants to hear those. I've gotten, I've got about five different other points to bring up, that could be the situation a lot more convoluted, but I will not take any more of Mr. Reeser's time, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Acting Mayor, and members of the council, Dan Reeser with Lionel Sawyer and Collins appearing on behalf of Castaway Trash Hauling and 433 LLC. As Member Guston has indicated, tomorrow the health board will be reviewing these regulations, and I don't believe, I, I think it's important for you to understand the, the full context of this. This proposed regulation is not changing existing law. In June of 2010, the health board, including Member Guston, adopted rules for commercial, not residential, commercial recycling. And those regulations already allow the recycling of food waste, which is within the definition of garbage, and is, is really the issue. And allows the recycling of food waste if it goes to a permitted composting facility, and the transporters are permitted by the health board. What the staff of, and, and neither waste nor Castaway are the proponents of this regulation. We have really actually been asked by the staff to help them on this particular issue, and I want to emphasize that this is a health board staff-driven ordinance. And the reason they want this ordinance, and the reason we believe you should support them in this ordinance, or this reg change, is that they're trying to eliminate disputes about their interpretation of the regs that are already on the books, and it is their interpretation that food waste is a recyclable material, and therefore, if properly, if the generator does not put it into the franchisee's containers and abandon it as garbage, but instead takes an alternative means of putting it into a recycling process, then it is not garbage. And the regulations that are already on the books provide for that, and they are simply trying to eliminate some disputes that are going on amongst customers, Waste Management, and providers, not just Castaway, but providers like Castaway that are in the competitive market. Because this will eliminate a lot of resource time for the health board staff, and because they're asking for this, and it is consistent with the law that already exists, we would urge you to support the staff, the staff request. I have heard, I did not hear the exact same response of to you, Member Guston, I did not hear the exact same change, actually, the change that Ms. Amaran proposed to me was just taking out including garbage. The whole, that whole dependent phrase, and have solid waste that is collected. And the reason for that is garbage is a subset of both solid waste and waste as defined by the health board's regulations. So I, I don't know that, she did not tell me excluding garbage. I actually think it doesn't matter one way or the other, whether it's including or excluding, I think you should just take out including garbage, because the rest of the code addresses this issue.
Well, your, your time is up, and I will give you plenty of time to talk, because I think the council needs to make a decision, but the, the difference to me is that if it includes garbage, it could, it theoretically then could be 100 percent garbage, and I don't think that's what the intent is. But let me call you back up later.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gary Duhon.
Good afternoon, Gary Duhon from Reno Disposal Company and Waste Management Company. Well, we, we couldn't agree more strongly that this is indeed a very significant change to existing law. I, I want to clarify exactly what we're talking about here. We're talking about garbage. Garbage is defined consistently in all the jurisdictions, the state, the, the Washoe County Health District, your codes, Sparks Codes, Washoe County Codes, franchise agreements, everybody defines it the same. It is defined as putrescible animal and vegetable waste resulting from the handling, storage, sale, preparation, cooking, and serving of food and beverage. Couple variations in the order of the words, couple things like that, but it is putrescible, meaning rottable animal and waste resulting from the handling of, of food. Now, the proposed regulation, 018, expressly allows the collection and transportation of solid waste, including garbage, and remember, that's a very specifically defined term. This city, under express grant of sovereign authority from the state, has granted the exclusive and sole right to collect and transport and dispose of garbage under a franchise agreement. Let's visit that for just a minute. The state says, because this area is so important, like ambulance service, water service, sewer service, they granted to the city of Reno the sole and exclusive right to regulate it. And what that means is, you can limit competition, you can sign an exclusive franchise agreement, and you can adopt laws, codes, and regulations in order to, to, uh, regulate that area of, of, of solid waste disposal. Nobody can change that, nobody can supersede that, not the county, not the, the county district health board, or anybody else. So what we have here is a, a regulation that purports to abrogate and circumvent a binding franchise agreement that's been in place for 20 years and has seven more years to run. It, it, it abrogates your sovereign right, as granted by the state, to limit competition in this area. And it also constitutes an express, or, I guess, is it an abrogation, is it an amendment, is it a circumvention of your franchise agreement and your laws? I'd like to read a couple to you. Now, these are, are your franchise agreement and your laws. Your law, uh, franchise agreement, section 2.1 says, "City of Reno does hereby grant to Reno Disposal the exclusive right, privilege, obligation, and franchise for the collection, hauling, and disposal of garbage in the city." Your codes say, "The city, its duly authorized agents, servants, employees, or contractees shall have the exclusive right to gather and collect and haul garbage." So that means you can, and who you designate can, and nobody else, it expressly states that. You have designated Reno Disposal Company on the franchise agreement, again, under an exclusive grant of authority from the state. The county, the county district board of health can't come in here and change that. It's simply not the existing law, it's not consistent with your law, and it, it is a violation of private property rights, private contract rights, public contract rights, and your laws and the city codes. Remember, this is gonna, let's talk about the practical effects for a minute, and if I could just have an extra 60 seconds, Mr. Guston.
What I'll do is, I want to be fair to you and Mr. Reeser, so I'll give you another 10 seconds or so, but, but I'm sure the, the board here, the city council will want to be asking questions. I, I, I want you to be able to state your case, but I want to be fair to both sides.
I understand. Very quickly, practical effects, public confusion, which law, who is entitled to haul garbage? The exclusive franchisee, or somebody permitted under, under the county code, or under the county regulations? A nightmare of disputes, this will not eliminate disputes, this will send the disputes into a nightmare of confusion, because we have conflicting laws.
Okay.
And it authorizes criminal acts.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, questions, Councilman Azzie?
Can I ask you a question, Dan, because that's a sort of my overriding issue here, what does this regulation try to change? What, what is the Health Department trying to get to here?
If I understand this...
Define garbage?
I, I, I may need some help from Mr. Shipman, but as I understand it, it says that they can then offer a permit for somebody to carry, to haul garbage.
And, and I'm getting back to what the Health Department does. Where, where are they authorized with that authority at all, to issue permits for people to do business? I mean, I'm, I'm, I've read through the agreement many times, and they're supposed to look at things that are safety-related, but this has nothing to do with safety, from what I can tell, it has to do with who gets permits, and that should be local jurisdictional level. So I'm not quite sure what the Health Department is trying to get to here, that they get to allow, they get to decide who gets to do permits, when that has nothing to do with the safety of this community. And that's all they're supposed to, to have authority over. Unless you, unless they can tell me why this has to do with safety, tell me why they're even venturing down this road.
I'm not sure this is an answer to you, but if they, if they permit somebody to do it, then they have oversight, is that correct, Jonathan?
For the record, Jonathan Shipman, Deputy City Attorney, I have to confess, I'm not an expert on the health board regulations. I can, I can tell you that, if, that the city does have a franchise agreement with Waste Management. State law authorizes the city to have a franchise agreement. We can exclude other business entities from collecting garbage, disposing, and hauling of garbage. That's currently what we have in place now. As far as the, the, um, the, the Board of Health is concerned, they have some regulatory authority through NDEP. I'm not, I'm, again, I'm not an expert on that and what they can...
Let me see if I can answer my own questions, whether, I can answer Councilman Azzie's, I don't know, but if, if this passes as written right now with the health board tomorrow, there, then by them adopting this and, and granting permits to whomever, they would be in violation of, of our franchise agreement?
Yeah, I think there's an argument to be made that that would be the case.
Okay. And so then, secondly, uh, if it's passed, then is it a violation of city, well, it would be of our code, obviously, and, and county codes, if, that, that they would grant a permit for somebody to haul garbage, when entities already have a contract with people to do that?
There certainly would be a claim that it would be a violation of law, yeah.
Then, thirdly, is if that is done, and company A has the agreement, and company B then gets a permit, which they operate on good faith, because they have a permit from the Board of Health, then that's a violation, and what, what are the, what's, what's, what are the teeth in the violation? I mean, is it, is it a criminal act?
There are, there, as Mr. Duhon, Duhon indicated, there are ordinances that make it illegal to to improperly transport and haul garbage in, within the city limits.
And getting back to Councilman Azzie's question, then, I guess this is what needs to be, the health officer is, it's the duty of the health officer to, to enforce any violations, then, right?
Correct, correct. As far as, as, as I'm aware, and that's part of the concern, too, is the enforcement arm has got kind of dual directives in terms of, um, you know, the enforcement mechanism, and, and you've got a permit on one hand, and you've got a franchise agreement on the other hand, and then, so there's potentially confusion there.
And getting back to Councilman Azzie's question, then who gave them authority to, to duly regulate that and enforce? That's where you're coming from, right?
Yeah, it's sort of, I mean, they, it's, it's sort of like, the city council has the duty and authority to identify where a restaurant goes, or they have to come through us to get the building permits, and then they get to go and, and exercise their power to make sure that restaurant is operated under the health codes. But they don't get to go say, you can put a restaurant in here if it's not zoned that way, or they could, I mean, if the Health Department said, you know, alcohol's good for people, we want to put in more alcohol, more liquor stores downtown to be on the absurd side, but they just get to say that, that we get to do the permitting process?
I don't know the answer to that, Councilman Zafrazo.
Question, I guess, for you, Jonathan, because part of the franchise, whether you agree with everything or not in the franchise agreement, there's specific fees that, that Waste Management pays, that their competitors don't, so this actually has a huge financial impact to the city. In fact, I think we're seeing it now through right-of-way tolls, I don't know if staff has done that analysis on the franchise fee, but they pay, I believe, the 8 percent, and their competitor, by transporting this, would pay nothing essentially, because we don't have an exclusive agreement with them, would that be correct?
Yeah, they would not be under, the city, they wouldn't be allowed to transport garbage under our franchise agreement, unless they had a franchise agreement, which they do not have.
Yeah, and then getting back to Dan's question, my second question would be, when, when the franchise agreement was written, in exchange for a sense, having that, that franchise agreement, that exclusive agreement, they do things such as pick up trash in city parks, there's different things that they're required to do to have that exclusive agreement, is that correct?
Correct.
So, in a sense, I guess, from your opinion, Jonathan, if we adopted this regulation, regardless of how we feel, I mean, we have the franchise in place, if we adopt this resolution, or, or regulation, or, or, we don't adopt it, it would give direction, I'm sorry, give direction to, to Councilman Guston, how do we do that with an existing agreement with an operator to transport garbage? And, and that garbage is defined as, I thought the, the way to make it simplistic is garbage is wet and trash is dry. How it was explained to me, it's a nasty, messy business, trash, garbage, garbage is wet, I don't know how you guys came up with the definitions, but essentially, is, is that the definition, that the garbage would be the wet waste, and the trash, that we don't have the franchise agreement on, would be the dry waste, the construction materials, things, things like that?
Right, there's generally the difference between garbage, which is like, you know, food-contaminated waste, and that's, I mean, that's my term for it, and trash, which is non-food-contaminated waste. And currently, we have, you know, Wa, Waste Management has a franchise agreement for garbage, residential and commercial. The, um, their, council's given direction to come, and they pay an 8 percent per year gross franchise fee on that, and there's been direction to come back with an ordinance amendment to essentially set up the equivalent of like a franchise-type of situation for trash haulers.
Up to 5 percent, correct?
At 5 percent, correct.
Because that's what we're capped on.
Correct, and currently, they don't, that is not, I mean, they're just paying a straight business license at this point in time, so that's...
So, Mr. Reeser, can I ask you a question, then, on, on this, because the way I see it, and based on our legal counsel, by, is it, in your opinion, that if the health board were to adopt this regulation, essentially, someone else outside of the franchise could then collect that waste?
No, I think that's the, that's the dispute that this, that the health board staff is trying to resolve. And I grant you, as I indicated in my conversation with Member Guston, that perhaps the clause including garbage or excluding garbage be taken out, because what the health board is saying, and I want everybody to listen to this very carefully, is that if title has not passed, if the generator, and I'm gonna give you an example, Great Basin Brewing, says, "I am going to source, separate my food waste, and I am going to send it to a composting facility," it is not garbage.
But it's, it's wet, though, Mr. Reeser, it is.
It does not matter, Ms... Councilwoman, it does not matter, your, this ordinance isn't gonna change that, the one that's pending. That is already the law. The law that food waste sourced, separated by the generator, and not delivered and abandoned for, uh, to the franchisee, is a recyclable material. That is state law, and that is the law in this county, it's already passed. That's why I said, this is not gonna change that. There's not a debate between Waste Management and companies like Castaway about what the definition of garbage is. We're agreeing to that, Mr. Duhon's right, it's the, it, it has, it doesn't change, that's not what's being debated tomorrow. What the staff of the health board is saying is, we want to stop the debate about the food waste recycling. If it's been properly sourced, separated by the generator, and not abandoned or put in a receptacle for the franchisee, title has not passed to the franchisee, and that may be still put to a recycling purpose by the generator. In answer to the question, I want to drill down on the other part of that question, though. The health board has its jurisdiction from the Nevada Legislature. Forty years ago, this body lost the legal authority to govern... Forty years ago, this body lost the legal authority to govern solid waste. The legislature took that away from the counties and the cities and gave it to the Boards of Health. In that connection, in Chapter 50 of the Health Board Regulations, they regulate companies like Castaway that pick up recyclable materials, whether it's food waste or CND, and take it to a permitted facility for recycling. And they do that within their jurisdiction to make sure that they are regulated entities and that they follow the Health Board Regulations as to what materials they can pick up and where they can take it. In Section 55, they regulate composting facilities that take that waste. And in Section 62, they regulate MRFs that don't, that take everything else but the food waste.
Okay, I think I got my question answered, so I'd ask the follow-up in fairness, Councilman Guston.
Could I just follow up on that before he sits down?
Sure.
Mr. Reeser, if, you made the comment that it's already part of the health regulations, it's already part of state law, that food waste is considered recyclable if it's, if it's separated properly and taken to a compost. So what additional does this regulation do? If that's already, if that's already established and that's, and there's no dispute over that, according to what you were saying, why do they need this additional regulation?
The staff has indicated to us that they feel that they need the additional regulation clarification so that they can-
But you're telling me there's no dispute in the industry over it?
Stop, well, I don't know that that's true. Waste would have to, I, I believe waste does have a different view than I am expressing.
Okay.
And I believe that my view is the view-
I thought you'd said that you both agreed on that.
No, on the definition of garbage.
Not solid waste.
On the definition of garbage, not on 050, 018. I believe that the, that is consistent with the existing regulations. But I will tell you this, Councilman Dorch, because your question's very good. Whether this proposed regulation passes tomorrow or never passes doesn't change state law. Those regulations already allow food waste to be properly separated by the generator and recycled. This, I, I just wanted to be here to tell you, to give you the background so you understand what it is that's generating this debate. And it's the staff is spending resources at the Health Board with complaints by the carriers, Waste and others, as to whether or not that bin can go to a composting facility or it has to go to the dump. And they think that this rule, they think this rule will fix that problem, and that's why they want it.
Okay, so then just two last questions, Mr. Reeser, before Jessica gets to Mr. Dillon. Then, I guess the first question is, do you have a position on whether they pass this or not, then? I mean, does it, does it, do you have a strong position either way on whether they, this moves forward?
Castaway's taken the position throughout this that we would support the staff, but that at the end of the day, whether this is adopted or not, does not change state law. Our position has been, we understand they want to stop spending the resources, scarce government resources with the debate, and we would support them in that.
And then, I know you've, you've made the comment that you could remove the language including garbage, and Mr. Guston said he would like to just change that to excluding garbage.
I don't think that changes the law at all, either.
Okay, so you're comfortable with that?
I'm, I, I think that the better, I'm not uncomfortable with that, Member Dorch, but I think the better approach would be no reference to garbage whatsoever, because what you've done by putting the definition, or putting the term garbage in that same clause, you've created another ambiguity.
And the only reason, the only reason, and I haven't talked to our attorney about this yet, I'll get to him when Jessica's done, but, I mean, the reason I, I think I like that excluding garbage is because part of the reason our attorneys aren't comfortable with this is they feel that it's in violation of our franchise agreement.
And I understand that. I, I respect Mr. Shipman. I disagree with that it has any impact on your franchise agreement whatsoever. This isn't going to, this is not in violation of the franchise agreement simply because-
I certainly appreciate your opinion, but I've got to stick with my attorney, I think.
Well, no, I'm just going to say, what Mr. Shipman didn't point out to you is the very provision of your franchise agreement that says that the franchisee takes the franchise subject to changes and anything, any, any law passed by the Health Board. So if, if your franchise agreement says, any franchise, whether it be a public utility or a garbage company, if they take a franchise subject to change of law, they are stuck with the change of law. That's a risk they took when they signed the franchise agreement. So I, with all due respect to Mr. Shipman, I don't see that issue.
Thanks. Sorry, Jessica.
Could I have one clarification from him? Just one, really simple. You keep mentioning the state law. When was that NRS enacted? Was that prior to our most recent contract?
Chapter 444 and 448 were first enacted in the mid-'70s. They've gone through many, many amendments, including the curbside recycling provisions that were passed in the early '80s, but the original statutory scheme is not new.
So our current franchise was implemented with this state law already in existence?
With, with regard to the jurisdiction of the Health Board? Is that what you're asking me?
No, the self-distribution and taking it for composting.
No, that is, that is the ordinance, those are the regulations of the Health Board that are already on the books since 2010. That's the, the, that food waste is a recyclable material was passed by the Health Board, Member Guston voting in favor, in June of 2010. That law was already passed. By the Health Board.
Councilwoman Zafrazov, sorry to circle around and get back to you.
That's okay. Just a couple of questions for Mr. Duhon in response. I'd asked on the, the franchise, and I might come back to you, Mr. Reeser, what's really behind this? I hate all the mumbo jumbo, let's get down to the bolts here. What is behind this? Why this change if it's existing in state law? I want to know what we're dealing with here, because it really doesn't seem like this is the issue. So what is the issue?
Well, my understanding, it's for the best intentions. And what they, I think they, they want to do is increase the ability to recycle. The problem is, that won't do this, or this won't, won't do that. There's a number of issues I'd like to address from, from, from Mr. Reeser. Other than, than the idea that they want to increase recycling, I don't know why it's there. If indeed, as has been pointed out, if it's already in there, why are we doing this? I guarantee you, it's not going to decrease disputes. What it does is it overrides a franchise agreement that's been in for many years, and I guarantee you, there's a disagreement about what law controls. A couple of points that Mr. Reeser pointed out that I think are critical to understand. Number one, he mentioned several times that, let's see, the property separated by the generator to be recycled is handled differently. Nothing in this regulation requires that. In fact, our concern is that you could have a 40-yard dumpster with one straw, or actually take the straw out of it, nothing's recyclable. They can haul garbage in violation of the franchise agreement. We proposed to say, instead of solid waste, including garbage, we proposed, make it recyclable materials, can be collected and transported. If, if what they want to do is recycle, well, shouldn't that solve the problem? They refused. They didn't want to do that. With regard to the exact language, making it solid waste and dropping including garbage is irrelevant, it won't change the meaning, because remember, garbage is part of solid waste. Solid waste includes a number of things, including garbage. So by saying solid waste, you're including garbage. So his proposed change doesn't address our concern one whit.
Can I go back to-
And it doesn't mean that it's not violating your franchise agreement, because it's still authorizing the hauling of garbage in violation of your franchise agreement and in violation of your code.
Can I ask something for clarification? If, if I own a restaurant and I put food in one container and, you know, plastics and garbage in one container, getting back to Reeser talking about the regulations, how would that work? Could then Castaway collect the food, side and Waste Management collect the plastic cups? Tell me how the regulation is in effect today.
Well, let's talk about the City of Reno codes. We're here to talk mostly about that.
Yeah, City of Reno.
And the City of Reno code saying, again, you are granted sovereign authority under Chapter 268, it's 268-081 of NRS, that grants you sovereign authority to limit competition, to execute a franchise agreement, and pass all codes that are necessary to do that. And so we'll talk about that for a moment. Garbage is putrescible, vegetable and, and animal waste produced in, in, in the handling of food, period. They are trying to create a different definition and impose it on the City of Reno. That's what's going on here.
So, but, that's my question.
So, so if somebody separated it and there's food in one container and all the other garbage in another container, the food in that container is still garbage. Nothing changes that. And nothing that the county can do, or the County District Health Board can do here is going to change your grant of sovereign authority. There's another issue with regard to who owns the garbage. He said, with regard to Title passing, he's saying that Title doesn't pass to the franchisee until it's been put in, in their container, in the franchisee's container. Well, think about it. The franchisee is the only one authorized under your law to put out a container. How can anybody else put out a container illegally? So if somebody puts out a container illegally, does Title pass to them? Of course not. One of the things I didn't have a chance to get to is your code expressly and specifically grants to Waste Management ownership, complete and total, of the garbage. And it says Title passes when it's picked up or placed in that container. Now, nobody else can place a container for garbage. How can it pass to anybody else in compliance with law? So one of the things this thing will do, one of the things this regulation will do, is abridge and take private property rights, which is ownership in that garbage and that solid waste stream.
So, right now, that's why I was asking, to get back to this proposed regulation at the Health Department, it really sounds like a dispute, and that's what's really driving this, this policy change at the Health Board. Let's just call it what it is, let's, why we're really here and get rid of the mumbo jumbo. So that's what I want to know, what the dispute is right now with Waste Management and Castaway. Are you guys having issues saying they're taking garbage, that, that Waste Management is responsible for collecting? Castaway, are you saying that you can pick up this trash and, and they can't stop you from doing it? That's what I, I, I want to know, because it sounds like between the lines, that's what this is really about.
Well, actually, it's not even between the lines. That's, that's, you seized on the heart of it, Mr. Zafrazov. What, what's really going on here, there is a dispute, and this is a perpetuation of that dispute about who can pick that up. That was recently addressed down in Carson City. The Carson City authorities cited Waste Management for collecting food products under a franchise agreement, it's very similar to yours, and Waste Management objected, and the Carson City District Attorney's Office reinforced the citation, demanded that they cease violating the franchise agreement. Now, I'm not saying that franchise agreement is identical, but it's substantially similar.
I'm sorry, say that again, Gary, the-
Waste Management put out a container to pick up food products from a customer, a significant customer down in Carson City. Carson City said that is a violation of the franchise agreement because you're picking up garbage, putrescible food products.
So they don't have the agreement in Carson?
No, they do have an agreement in Carson.
Okay.
That's the point. There's a franchise agreement in favor of the franchisee in Carson City. Castaways was cited for taking garbage. They're calling it recyclable material.
Okay, you were saying Waste Management was cited, so I-
I'm sorry, I apologize for the confusion. Castaways was cited for taking food stuff from, from a customer. They argued it's recyclable materials. Carson City said, "No, that's garbage." And the council for, for Castaways objected and argued, said, number one, as I recall, I don't remember all the arguments, and I, I hate to paraphrase, but essentially it's this, said that Carson City didn't have authority to do an exclusive franchise in, in the way that they were doing it, and objected that it was a violation of the Commerce Clause to do the franchise agreement and haul, limit hauling of waste essentially the way it was being hauled. Very, very, that's probably a gross oversimplification. Here's what's important, though. The DA's office vested with responsibility, the legal counsel for Carson City upheld the citations, disagreed with all their conclusions about this is recyclable material and it's not garbage, and ordered them to remove it. Okay, they ordered them to remove the, the containers. So this is a dispute. It's going on right now. Now, that will continue. This will exacerbate that dispute. Let's, let's boil it down to the nuts here. Does the Washoe County District Board of Health have the ability to wholesale amend and circumvent your city code, your franchise agreement, and the express grant of authority by the state to limit competition? The answer is absolutely not. It doesn't matter when, when the statutes were enacted so much as the intent of the legislature. And, and the intent of the legislature is clear. Ambulance service, water service, sewer service, garbage service is so important to the public safety and health that they choose just a few very limited areas of business and commerce to say the local jurisdiction has an extremely important public safety interest in carefully regulating that, limiting competition and making sure it's done right. Now, a couple of things under the franchise agreement that I want to make sure you're aware of. That won't apply to anybody else.
Can I, can I, because this is where, where I get to my point, and so I brought up the state laws, and this is where the Health Department does have some authority here. In NRS 444, 495, you brought 444, the solid waste management authority is defined as the District Board of Health in this, in this community. But under 444-500, the solid waste management system is defined as the entire process of storing, collection, transportation, processing, recycling and disposal of solid waste. I agree you have that authority to define what the process should be, not who should do it. That, to me, is the big difference. They should define the process of, here's how it has to be stored, here's how you have to handle it from, from A to B. At the end of the day, who does it is up to a local jurisdiction, in, in my mind. In 439-410, it also says, under the establishment of the Health Department, they can regulate sanitation and sanitary practices in the interest of the public health. They can regulate how it happens, not who does it. And that's what seems to me what's trying to happen here is, by giving permits, they're saying who gets to do it, not, "Okay, City of Reno, if you're going to grant someone a permit, this is what they have to follow through to do." That's where I think we're getting off. I don't think it's a dispute between them. For me, it's between, I think the Health Department is overstepping its authority and saying they want to issue permits at all, instead of just regulating how it's done. They want to regulate who does it.
To address your point about regulation and how it happens, remember that under the franchise agreement, that is only between Reno Disposal and the City of Reno, there are many, many requirements imposed on, on the franchisee. Adequate training and supervision of drivers. Insurance. We provide insurance to ensure the City of Reno from liability. An indemnification provision whereby we indemnify the City of Reno from liability. A $50,000 bond requirement. Requirements on the type of trucks that can be used, how they're sealed on top so garbage doesn't blow out, how they're sealed on the bottom so water and liquids, garbage liquid doesn't flow out the bottom. That applies only in the context of a franchise agreement, because that's the only entity authorized to haul garbage. None of those protections for the City of Reno or the people of the City of Reno will be in place if other people are hauling garbage. It doesn't fit within the structure. Now, there may be some regulations out there somewhere else that might protect it, but again, what's that doing to the sovereign authority of the City of Reno to take care of your citizens under that grant from the state? It's abrogating it. If you're going to say, "Well, we'll just rely on the district." I will say that your codes say that the district has the duty and authority to enforce the municipal code. And so they would be in an impossible situation. They've permitted and authorized somebody to haul garbage, but that's in violation of, of your municipal codes. How are they going to do that? Now, I'm not sure the district agrees. I'm not, as I understand, the district doesn't agree it's their duty to enforce your code. So they're apparently, they apparently believe it's only their duty to enforce their code. Nevertheless, it's a violation of your code, your franchise agreement and your right to limit competition.
Getting back to what Dave said, and I'll, I'll be done here. I, I think the way the process works, we approve a permit, for example, for a restaurant. Then the restaurant has to go in and get that permit, the Health Board permit. I don't see how it's different here. We have an agreement with a franchisee to provide a service for garbage. Then they have to enforce to make sure that you guys are collecting the garbage appropriately throughout the Health Department's standards. So that's, I mean, really, to me, this is, this question is legal, in my mind, Councilman, because this is not a dispute over regulation. This is truly a dispute between the parties on who can collect what, in my opinion. And it sounds like there is some legal disputes between the parties on, on their interpretation of things, but we have our franchise and, and who enforces that. But changing this, I don't agree that that's going to solve anything.
Let me ask you a question, if I paraphrase you. So it's, in your mind, it is about what they're talking about as a regulation and what we really-
and what we really should be talking about is jurisdiction? Who has jurisdiction over the permits? That's what you're really saying?
That's what I'm saying. I'm saying if there's a violation, someone's committing a violation. I don't know who that is, because staff needs to investigate that. But if someone's picking up garbage that they're not supposed to be picking up, or vice versa, if they can pick it up, it seems like there's a legal remedy for that. Under our existing franchise, if someone is collecting something they're not supposed to be collecting, seems like that's a civil or legal dispute. I don't know. But it's something I think the city would be involved in, in standpoint, we're losing revenue because of that action. If that action's actually happening, it seems to me that there should be some enforcement action. That, I think that's the issue that we're really looking at here. It has nothing to do with the regulation. Let's just say what it is. And that's what it is. This is a dispute between two parties, and I think it's got to be resolved on who gets to collect the garbage. I always thought it was wet waste. Maybe I'm not.
I wish it was. It'd be a lot simpler to understand. Let me just, excuse me, Mr. Duhon, let me ask. Jonathan, I know you say you're not expert in this, but in terms of regulation versus enforcement and jurisdiction, right now, the enforcement is in the hands of the Health Department. That's what Councilman Frasza is asking. Well, if somebody violates it, then we should go out and do that. But that's absolutely in the Health Department's bailiwick now, isn't it?
Yeah, I think there's two things. I think, yes, I think most of that is in the Health Department. The other issue is the resources needed to do the enforcement becomes an issue. Even if the city were to do the enforcement, I mean, that's the, it costs a lot of money to go from dumpster to dumpster and deal with it.
Yeah, but I mean, that's something, if you have enforcement, you have to do that. You have cops, you have to arrest people. You know, that's what it's about. So I guess we come down to, then, if either way tomorrow, if, well, not either way, if this regulation by the Health Board is passed, then how does it infringe on our right to grant permits? Because if they would give company B...
Franchise agreements you're talking about, or?
Franchise agreement, yes, I'm sorry, what did I say? Rattling around here. If this is passed tomorrow, and somebody else gets a permit to collect garbage in the city of Reno, doesn't that infringe on our franchise agreement?
That's an argument, definitely, yes.
Well, who gets sued? Isn't the operator?
Yeah, I mean, I think what you've heard today is that there's a dispute going on between two parties. And there's an invitation to the city of Reno to get involved and to be part of that litigation, if you want to be, quite frankly.
I think you characterized that correctly. Thank you very much. Let me get to Councilman Hesjeff.
Yeah, I just wanted to hear from Mr. Reesner on a couple of points that Mr. Duhon brought up. And then after that, if you don't mind, Mr. Merrill, I'll give you my comments, too.
Yes, sir.
I think he, as I understood Mr. Luhon's argument, contrary to yours, he says whether title transfers or not, it doesn't change the definition of garbage. And what happened in Carson City is evidence of that. Where they basically told you, you cannot put out the recyclable bin because that would then violate their franchise agreement.
With regard to Carson City, with all due respect to Mr. Duhon, it has no application in Washoe County. Because unlike the District Board of Health here, they have not passed a recycling regulation that says that food waste is recyclable. And that is where, you know, at the end of the day, that's where Carson City came down. And I also want the record to be very clear, Mr. Duhon misrepresented it. Castaway was never cited. The city of Carson City called up Castaway and said, we don't think your customer can do food recycling within the city of Carson City because the law is different here than Washoe County. And we removed the bins. We then sent them a letter on behalf of that customer and said, we think you should reconsider your position. They said they don't want to reconsider their position. That's their point. That's the state of the record in Carson City. It has no, it can provide no guidance to you, Member Hesjeff, here because Carson City has a completely different solid waste management plan and system. A completely different one.
Okay. I guess for my comments, I mean, these are...
Can I ask Mr. Reeser a question, just for? Can I ask you a question? Is, as Councilman Frasza is trying to get to the heart of this matter, if this would pass by the Health Board tomorrow, would it be the intent of your client to get a permit to collect garbage in the city of Reno?
No, and, 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 Member Guston, I do not believe that that is the interpretation of the Health Board. That may be your council's interpretation, that may be Mr. Duhon's interpretation, that may be what you're reading into what they're trying to do. I think that the Health Board, and perhaps in artfully, maybe they can, and they will propose some changes tomorrow. But what the Health Board staff, and I want this to be very clear, there's not litigation, and in our view, there's not a dispute. We provided, and do provide, my clients do, food waste recycling services consistent with the Health Board regulations. Waste management protest. They filed protests with the Health Board. They lost. The Health Board said the 2010 regulations allow this. There's a permitted composting facility. This is allowed in Washoe County. You are wrong, waste management, we're going to allow it. Waste management persists. That's why the staff wants the regulation clarified. Do they need, absolutely need to get it clarified? Obviously not. They've already made a ruling. The dispute's over. Waste management lost. The staff is trying to clarify the law. We're supporting them in trying to clarify the law so they don't have to use those resources. But whether it passes or not, the Health Boards already told them, this is permissible activity. Stop complaining. What waste, and you asked earlier, Member Frasza, why is waste in this big dust-up? Because they didn't stop the 2010 regulations from passing. They passed, they became the law, they don't like that law, they don't like its interpretation by the staff, and this is their last chance to try to change that by sticking some word in there so that they can go off to court and start the dispute that they want to start, which is to sue the Health Board, or whoever they want to sue, and say that the Health Board's interpretation is wrong. If you want to cut to the chase, that's the dispute. The dispute's between waste management and the Health Board. We believe the Health Board's interpretation of the 2010 law is correct.
Thank you, thank you. Councilman, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If you have a question, go ahead. Yeah, I think we're kind of put in this particular spot. Dan, good luck to you this week.
Thank you.
But the way I, I mean, they're all good arguments, you know, but really, the jurisdiction lies with the Health Department. Because the argument is, as I understand it, they can't pass regs that would change our franchise agreement. I mean, they can't. And I don't see if they pass it or not pass it, that they do. My only advice to you is, I'm not going to predetermine the issue for you and the District Board of Health, but it seems to me that the Health Department and their legal staff, it's incumbent upon them to make sure they have the authority to do what they're saying because that's part of the dispute. And it seems to me that if they do pass a reg, they need to be very clear about, if they issue a permit, whether they can do that in the city of Reno. I mean, if they're clarifying the rule and it doesn't change anything, then it's not going to change our franchise agreement. The argument I'm hearing is, if they do pass this rule, then they can come in, issue, somebody's going to issue a permit and then violate our franchise agreement. Nobody can pass a reg to me that violates our franchise agreement, but your legal staff over there needs to clarify this. And then give us some comfort that if it does include, if it does affect the definition of garbage as that's defined in our agreement, whether that's consistent with state law or whatever, then ultimately, they need to decide whether, if they do issue a permit, whether that could be, they could issue one in Reno. They may not be able to. I just don't know.
Other comments?
I've got a question for Jonathan.
Councilman George?
Thank you. Jonathan, just to kind of follow up on the, where was that before? Clearly, your opinion is that the existing language is written is in conflict with our
Yeah, there's an argument to be made that it creates a conflict.
And, but, but the proposed change that Dan made, say excluding garbage, would correct that?
It would, to the extent that our franchise really, at the core of it, goes to garbage and residential. And if you were to remove the garbage reference, then you're not, it, the conflict, direct conflict goes away. Or, I mean, and by say, remove, I mean by excluding garbage, not removing them, right?
Okay, that's all I had.
So Jonathan, you're saying that it needs to say excluding garbage versus no reference at all, as Mr. Reeser was suggesting?
Right, if you say excluding garbage, then you're, yeah, you're definitely exempting it, correct, yeah.
Okay.
And that's the recommendation, right?
Who's my alternate tomorrow? Yes, Councilman Frasza.
Yeah, I think this issue goes deeper than it appears in the sense that, listen, the city's losing revenue, potentially. That's the bottom line here. And I think that we've got to look at someone, I don't know who the enforcer is of what's garbage and what's not garbage, and how you enforce the franchise agreement. To me, that kind of seems a little bit out of the Health Department's purview because if someone just opens up shop and starts collecting garbage, saying I can do it for 10 bucks, I'll beat, you know, your current franchisee, who would go in and enforce that? That's the Health Department, or is that, is that our code enforcement? How does that work? But that, to me, is the real issue, is what is going on now? Is the franchise, is it being violated currently? And, and, I mean, maybe we should have that presentation by staff. I would, I'd be curious to know how much those franchise fees have gone down over the last few years, and how many of those customers have been absolved in other ways. I think that is problematic for the city. I do, and something we need to look into. I don't know about these regulations tomorrow, Councilman Guston, because, you know, I don't sit on the Health Board, but I think, one way or another, this is probably going to end up in court, I have a feeling. I don't want to be a party to that litigation. However, I think on our end, we need to make sure that the current franchise agreement is being enforced because it does, it does have a fiscal impact to the city of Reno. And I don't know if staff is, if legal staff or anyone else has looked into this issue as far as whether it's being followed or not. I don't understand this whole food storage issue because I thought that wet trash, again, I'm going to say it again, was collected under the franchise agreement. I didn't know that I could separate my food and then have someone else collect it. I didn't know that that was legal under our current franchise. If it is, Jonathan, I'd like to hear you say that right now. But if it isn't, then, then maybe we need to do something about enforcement here. And get it resolved. To me, that's what the real issue is, is whether that can be done or not, regardless of what the Health Department does.
I just, I'm, Jonathan has the answer, but two questions that you asked. Is it being infringed upon now? I have no information at all, have not gotten any, is being infringed upon? And, what was the second thing you said? You asked a question about, oh, enforcement. I think the Health Department still has the enforcement. They still, it's not, the enforcement is still, regardless of our franchise, is on the Health Department.
So then I would ask you, Councilman, is there a violation right now under the enforcement? And I think, Mr. Reeser, you had said that, that waste, and Gary, can you address this before we wrap this up? Because, Dan, you had said that, that the new regulations went into effect in 2010. So this issue of, so now Castaway can pick up the food? So, both of you, I need you to address this because I think it needs to be understood. But, so, is that where waste is in conflict with what the regs are, or what?
Well, I think that's the heart of the dispute. The question is, and the disagreement is, can the regulations adopted by the Health District modify and amend your laws, modify and amend your franchise agreement?
But the ones in 2010, were there new regulations imposed in 2010 by the Health Board?
I believe there were, yes.
Okay, so...
And that doesn't, but that doesn't change your franchise agreement.
Okay, so, but he's saying they're interpreting them one way, those 2010 codes, and you guys are interpreting them another way. Am I correct on that?
Well, we're in a difference of opinion about which controls. I'm not debating the interpretation of the Health District regulations, new or old. What I'm, what I'm saying is, your franchise agreement, your laws, your grant of authority in NRS 268 is supreme in that regard. They cannot override your franchise agreement. They cannot amend your franchise agreement. They cannot circumvent it or throw it out the door. They can't just come in and say, no, we're not going to call that garbage anymore. We're now going to call that recycling, and do something different than what the city laws say.
That's what I'm asking, though. In your opinion, is that happening now?
We understand, and we believe, Reno Disposal believes, that, yeah, there is, there is some garbage being hauled under the justification that it's recycling that we do not agree with. We have tried not to raise the dispute. We've been trying to be cooperative. We have proposed multiple amendments to this regulation, including, if you issue the permit, make sure that the operators, put a statement in there that the operators still have to comply with city code and law and franchise agreement. They refused to put that in. I also asked the Health District.
Okay.
I also asked for a provision that says, no permits will be issued to haul garbage if it would violate city law. That didn't make it in there. We also suggested language that would say, well, you can haul recyclable materials, but not garbage. If this is indeed a recycling issue, haul recyclable materials as that term is defined under city code as well as elsewhere. That didn't show up. We have worked very hard to find a cooperative resolution here. Again, we've had a contract in place for 25 years. Our relationship with the city of Reno is wonderful. It's great. We look forward to improving it in the future. We're not the interlopers here. We have an established system that is being challenged from the outside. Councilwoman, you wanted to ask Mr. Reeser a question?
Yeah, and the same thing, Mr. Reeser. And I guess where I'm getting confused is on this 2010. You had said in 2010 that the District had adopted new regulations.
In June of 2010, the District Board of Health adopted master recycling regulations. Creating the, creating the regulation of MRFs of transportation and of composting facilities.
Okay, so my question for you, was your client collecting wet waste before the 2010 regs went into place?
No, the 2010 regs, Members Frasza said, and say today, that not until the District Board of Health licenses a facility as either a composter, or a, with regard to the food waste, or a MRF as to other wastes. Not until that occurs.
So they're not picking up wet waste right now?
Would you let me finish?
Yeah.
The ordinance says, until they permit a MRF for non-food waste or a composter for food waste. And this is all commercial, not residential, which is a competitive market, not subject to the franchise agreement. Once they have licensed that kind of a facility, then the competitors may pick up and bring that food waste. So, they did and have licensed a food composter.
Your client is...
No, no, the District Board of Health. A company called Donnelly in the North Valleys is a licensed, regulated composting facility, regulated by the Health Board. Once they did that, then the District Board regulations of 2010 were triggered, and food waste could at that moment then be a recyclable material because the Health Board had licensed somebody... somebody to compost food waste.
Okay, so-
At that point-
Getting back to my question, please, just a yes or no answer, is your client collecting-
You didn't ask me a yes or no question.
Yes, I did, I said, are they collecting wet waste now?
They are collecting food waste today. I told you that a long time ago. They're doing that for a number of businesses. There is, and that waste is going to the composting facility.
Okay, I think, to me, that's, I got my answer, that's what this whole dispute is about. So is the wet waste.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Again, it kind of puts us in an uncomfortable position to kind of second-guess what another board is doing. And I think if, if you're going to, if I have any comments to you, Dan, I think it's incumbent upon the Health Department and their legal counsel to, when they, if they do any of these regs, to give some comfort to not only the city of Reno or Sparks, because if the argument is, no matter what they do with the definition of garbage, if the city's already contracted away a subset of that definition, then a change in that reg is not going to change how we implement our franchise agreement. But, I mean, the lawyers at the Health Department need to have some thoughtful analysis, and maybe in the process of clarifying this reg, make it clear that it doesn't change any existing agreements. And, again, if we've already contracted food waste, maybe we did, maybe we didn't, but, but ultimately, they need to, they need to make that decision, so that we have at least some guidance on what we do here.
You know, and, and that's what I asked Jonathan, I think it was my first question out of the box, is, is if, if this is passed tomorrow, does it violate our franchise agreement? And he did say yes. So I will give Ms. Admiran that, that counsel about whatever they're going to do, they've got to give the city of Reno and Sparks-
Yeah, and they should be able to determine their own jurisdiction and say, "What we're doing basically is within our statutory authority, and it's not preempting what the city has by way of its exclusive monopoly, or its exclusive right to basically deal with franchisees, to collect, call, dispose garb," whatever our jurisdiction is, they should be able to distinguish that for the board, and therefore give us some guidance, too.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Zadra.
Thank you. Dan, I think that it's also clear that this nuance, much too soft a word, was never anticipated when our contract, when our franchise was initiated. We never anticipated that there would be a distinction between, you know, separating so that you could send it off for recycling. So if that's the case, we need to update the intent and clarity within our, our own franchise. And I'll state again, as I have before, there are some pending points that are being brought forward by waste management, and they're intending to bring them forward, in my understanding, in independent sections, so that we don't look at the entire contract at one time, and that just will not be acceptable in, from my reference point. Any changes to the contract, including recycling and lawn waste, will, should be considered at one time. It's one contract agreement, and we shouldn't parcel it out to make it essentially beneficial for one and not the, the community.
I just have one last comment, it doesn't affect my vote tomorrow one way or the other, but it, I think, but it's been frequently referred to as the, we passed in 2010, there was, there was such a, an upheaval at the time and willingness to get some regulations on the books about recycling. That's what we were basically talking about, recycling. We weren't talking about, about different areas, we were talking about recycling, and we're talking about the clean MRF and the dirty MRF, and how we got that moved forward within our community. And now, by doing that, it's opened this other avenue of what is recyclable and what is garbage. I think there's been another, as to use Councilman Hesjeff's, another subset of what, of what that was, because recycling was a generic term. We thought about it as, as, as plastic and bottles and those kind of things, and now it means much more. So that's, I think in 2010, you go back and talk about, about why that was passed, but I don't think that's, that was really what everybody understood at that time. At least certainly I didn't. Any other comments? Thank you very much, thank you one and all for your, your comments, and we'll go forward.
Good afternoon. For the record, Cadence Matievich presenting your good news, not the Matievich news, still the good news, even though Chris Good isn't delivering it, for this week, and actually, I think catching up from last week, I'll ask for some assistance in moving through the PowerPoint. The first thing is a recognition of Veterans Elementary for making a donation to the Volunteers of America Shelter. This was a sixth-grade class at Veterans Memorial Elementary School who collected and donated a truckload of canned goods and other non-perishable food items for residents of the Volunteers of America Shelter. So we wanted to recognize the efforts on behalf of those schoolchildren, they did a great job. More good news from the media in business week, Reno is listed in the best 50 cities. We rank 44th in their list of America's Best Places. They said that Reno is good for the outdoorsman and the gambler alike. We have the National Bowling Stadium, they noted that great facility, our entertainment and dining venues, and they said Reno pretty much rocks. So some great press there. Some additional media, Princeton Review named UNR's MBA program on their best list. This is the fourth year in a row that that has received that designation, recognizing UNR's College of Business in its Best Business Schools Guidebook, based on the quality of the MBA program at the university, and based on a survey of over 19,000 students. We were the, we, there are 294 universities that have that best designation, they're not ranked in any order, but UNR's program's academic experience rating is up to 85 this year, which is up four points from last year. And the students that were surveyed said that the program provided solid prep for doing biz in a global economy. So great news for our university. And one more item to mention, again, media recognition for our community, Men's Health listing Reno in the top 10 luckiest cities. Amongst the criteria were winners of Powerball, Mega Millions, and the Publishers Clearinghouse Sweepstakes, the most hole-in-ones, the PGA keeps track of those, the fewest lightning strikes, including the fatal kind, and the fewest deaths from falling objects. So, boy, are we lucky. And that's our good news report for this week.
Any public comment? None? Sorry?
Motion adjourned.
And, yeah, we have a mo-
Is that me?
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn in a second. Can we take just a couple of minutes? I'll be right back, and we'll get into our redevelopment. We need to have a quorum, I'll be right back. Avenue?
Basically has everything we talked about last time in it, right?
Yep.
About the payment earlier, but it's in here. So staff did a good job.
Second. Is that a motion by the right?
Well, I think, in all aspects, it was passed the resolution, right? I don't know if there's any action on that one. Is there, number one?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, just the resolution is the action you need to take.
Okay.
Would you like me to read it?
Read it, please.
Resolution number 206, resolution of the Redevelopment Agency of the City of Reno authorizing the chairman of the agency to execute amendment number one to the development agreement by and between the Redevelopment Agency of the City of Reno and Firehouse 495 LLC, including the modification and execution of all other deeds and agreements referenced therein, and authorizing the chairman, executive director, and members, officers, and agents of the agency to take all actions necessary to implement the agreements approved herein and under this resolution.
Second. A motion, second, all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Move to item, agenda item C, any future agenda items? Councilwoman Zadra?
You know what, I'll talk to staff first, and then I'll bring it at another meeting.
Okay, anybody else?
Just a question, Councilman Guston, on the town hall for the Midtown Plan, they were looking at potentially the 15th? I don't know if you got that email for the redevelopment, the Midtown?
No, I'm sorry, I didn't get that yet.
And I, I, that's not a day that works for me, so, maybe we can look at that?
You know, I haven't even seen it, so I'm wide open on terms of date.
After this meeting, I guess we could talk about it, but just to let staff know, because it's the redevelopment plan area.
Okay, we will. Any other future agenda items? Okay, any public comment? No?
Thank you, Dan.
We have a motion to adjourn? Do we have second?
Second.
We are adjourned.